Down the road to find that, what is it like 15 grand to buy that chair?
Twenty one thousand.
Twenty one.
Did you receive a?
You're unmuted.
Wait, I'm muted?
Unmuted.
Okay. Just before we start, did you receive a volunteer form from Dave Bowen?
No, he tried and he couldn't get it to submit. I told him just tell me what you want to be on, but he never answered.
Oh, he just told me.
Okay, good.
Planning board, so. He just texted me and said he tried, so.
I turned the amps on. No one touched it, right?
Nope, okay. Are you, uh? Do we know what's working tonight? I heard you had good luck with Neil.
You were supposed to be able to test it, right?
I'm gonna go on right now.
I'm not saying you, I'm just saying we, I guess. I said you, but.
So did he actually find out where our problem was?
So did he actually find out where our problem was?
You weren't talking about that.
It was a multitude of prospective things it could have been.
He took off some extensions and it could be me choosing the wrong microphone.
I don't know. It's working.
Right now, yeah.
So.
So should we get started?
So, do we really, do we actually call it the order for a workshop? We do? Okay.
Yeah.
You know, eight quarter past.
Five sixteen. Start it.
So I try to think of everything I could include in here. I printed up the same report I printed for you, Aaron, out of Trio with the several years.
Yeah, where is that?
I didn't include it because it was wrong. It didn't match.
So this is wrong?
Yeah.
What you gave me? What's wrong about it?
It's missing certain things, certain road expenditures and little things here and there. And I gotta call into Trio to see why. If I run a regular report, expense report revenue in those prior years, they match. But when I run that, that one, it's missing things, so.
So that was one of my questions was.
I don't know why.
So when you go on, like, let's just, you mind if I take over for a minute, Kathy?
Nope.
Because I just, this is basically for, to get my head wrapped around how this works. So what, this first section, what, what is this?
That's what I prepare for budget meetings. It's the same thing as the one Trio printed, but mine's accurate.
Okay, so we'll get this when we do the budget. So it doesn't, so I see it has actual for twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, twenty four.
Yep.
But no approved. Is there a way to get, that's what this information you said you can't get, right?
What do you mean?
And the one I printed from Trio that your hand's on, some of the expenditures, some of the actuals are missing for some reason.
So what I'm looking for, Nick, is like we spent in twenty twenty one, first line is fourteen, eleven forty, twenty one is what we spent.
Right.
What did we budget?
Oh.
That's the number I'm wondering. So I'm wondering, I'm wondering if we came in the red or the black.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm trying to do some comparisons, like what are we always under on, you know?
So these are the budgets, that's the actual.
Right, this is missing stuff she said, that's what she was talking about.
Yep, okay.
So.
I will work on that after I talk to Trio. Maybe I'm not choosing the right format or I don't know.
No, that's fine. I mean.
Who's Trio?
Trio's the software. So you're saying you can see it on your computer screen, you just can't get it in a print form?
No, I can print it, but I was comparing today, making sure it matched mine and matched, all the numbers matched. And that one didn't. That one, I went line by line down to see why, and it was missing certain expenditures.
Okay.
I don't know if it's because they weren't in the budget line when we approved the budget, or I'm not sure.
All right, so just to wrap my head around this, the bold lettering, like let's go down to miscellaneous expenses. The bold lettering, what does that mean? Everything below the bold lettering is, is that bold lettering going to be the total of that, or how does this work?
Oh, so there's different divisions, like administration is O one, O one.
Yep.
Or O one. So it's broken up in different groups. So miscellaneous, under miscellaneous is training, advertising, fire extinguishers, and unemployment. And then the totals.
So everything has a total I saw, except for like Summer Roads, there's no like grand total for Summer Roads.
Yeah, there is.
There is? That's, I couldn't find that. Where?
Page fifteen.
So maybe that's why, I didn't look through this, but I couldn't find that on this. Maybe that's one of the line ends that was missing.
I think there was a total, so I was trying to compare that too, and there was some. The only thing, the one I create doesn't include, because we have four funds, Fund One, Fund Two, Fund Three, Fund Four. We use Fund One for regular operating budget. Two is special revenue. Three is, um, can't remember what it's called, I have to look. Four is trust funds. So mine doesn't include that because we don't include those other funds in our budget to raise taxes.
So if we go to Summer Roads, which is on page fifteen total.
Yep.
And we go to twenty twenty five approved, that's the current year.
Twenty, yep. No, no, no.
Sorry, twenty six.
Twenty six is, I just didn't change the headings.
Where did that number come from? One ninety three, because I thought the amount at the town meeting was one eighty five.
Says it on.
The last column.
Where'd you get one ninety three?
Total. Twenty twenty six requested.
Oh, up there? Yeah. Yeah, well, I guess I don't understand which line's which because I see the one eighty five from the town meeting.
Yeah.
If you see, look at the first page, because I haven't updated these headings. These are for budget meetings. The first page, I cross it out and I put approved at town meeting on that last column.
Right, I did see that. So that's what that column is?
Yep, those are all the amounts approved at town meeting.
Right. The twenty twenty six, all the way to the right, twenty twenty six column is approved at town meeting.
We just, we don't usually use this unless it's budget.
So this whole column is town.
I don't have that column.
So instead of that being budget committee recommends, that's what was approved.
Okay, that makes sense.
She likes me more than you.
Sorry, I missed you. So next year I'll create two more columns and start over and change all the totals for the last two years.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Is FEMA in this report somewhere?
That's Fund Two, so no.
All right, so.
We don't use that for operating. We're not supposed to. I know we are this year because the budget committee recommended it.
So this whole cluster that we're looking at is Fund One?
Yep.
Can you tell me what the hell that means?
Fund One is what we use to operate the town on a regular basis. That's what we base our taxes off of. We have to raise this much money.
Okay.
Even though this year the budget committee said, well, let's use our reserves up instead of raising money, which.
Okay.
Isn't a true picture of what it costs for the year.
Well, no, but you saw, we had to use FEMA money.
The FEMA, yes.
Yes, okay. And we had to use that paving reserve money because that was set for Pratt Road.
Set for paving.
Yeah. I agree with the other stuff, but.
Like they, they lower the ACO budget because they said there's money in the reserve we can use. So that's not going to be an actual picture of what we spent money on the animal patroliers.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's why I wanted this, so I can see what we're, what we previously approved versus what we've used. So I can go back to, in the words of our former governor, zero base budget. Don't start with what you had.
I can, I can print that with just all the approved amounts every year. Just right now the expenditure line is wrong.
That's fine.
Approved or requested?
Both. Well, no, approved.
Approved and then expended.
Oh, 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 yeah.
If we, if we really truly want to save money on taxes, the best way to do it is to start with what you know. Payroll, health insurance, all that stuff.
So I will.
And then work out from there.
They usually take a couple days to call back.
That's fine. I mean, this is, we got time. I'm just, you know this way better than me. And you know this way better than Nick. You and Kathy both know it. Kathy knows it better than me and Nick, probably not as well as you do, but we need to know it.
So if you go, I printed summary reports is what I usually give you at the Sletman's meetings. That's no detail, just what was approved in the totals, spend.
This is for the current month?
The current year. Has up today.
Okay, through the year.
So you have expense, revenue, and general ledger. And then behind that is all the detailed reports, which shows every entry.
So that was another one of my questions on these expense reports. Let me find an example over here somewhere. All right, so if you go to page five of the expense report, November.
The summary or the detail?
The summary. Expense summary. So page five, how about safety? Uh, let's pick a different one. Let's do page four, Special Reserve FEMA. So it says year-to-date net three eighty four zero five five nineteen. And then it says negative that same amount. What's, why are some, what's the negative mean? Does that mean that's what we spent or that's what we got left? Because I see up above there's positives, and I don't know what.
Unexpended amount.
So.
We haven't, that's because this isn't a cash account. It's not showing the expenditures, unless, I talked to Trio about this. He said I could put under the first column, budget net, I could make it a general entry and put amounts in there. That way it will give a total of what's left.
That's what I'm looking for.
And I'm, I have the notes on how to do it, but I can't do it for all of them because like the RET committee, money keeps coming in. I would have to do several to keep that balance correct.
I, yeah, I wouldn't worry about the, like.
I know, but I have to look at them all.
Oh, so it's going to screw you up?
Right.
But I'm still thinking about.
I just, I can't wrap my head around, Summer Roads is a perfect example. We're constantly weekly writing checks for Summer Roads. I can't wrap my head around like a checkbook. What do we have left in Summer Roads? And I don't know how to get that information.
You have to look at your general ledger balance, minus the expenses in your report, and add the revenues.
So for example, if you go to FEMA.
Are we still on page four?
Yes. So if you go to FEMA, you got three eighty four fifty five nineteen. That's what we have.
Let me find FEMA here. FEMA. She, I'm trying to think why. It says seven sixty nine, seven sixty four eighty six.
What page are you on?
Two of the general ledger summary.
Page two.
But we had four hundred and sixty one thousand from prior year that we got. I don't think that's.
I'm not, I'm not seeing that. I'm on page two of the expense report.
No, general ledger. Summary. Look at that.
Yeah.
But she's not done with last year's audit. We're still working on it every day, so that force, I think it was four sixty one, we added to that. It's probably still under revenue.
I think so. This one said summary general ledger. I think. Right, Leanne?
Yeah.
Yep, page two of the summary general ledger. At the top it says FEMA fund balance, seven sixty nine.
Right. That was what we had at the beginning of the budget year.
We had more than that, but we're, we haven't made the adjustments from prior year yet.
Well, we had more than that. I think seven sixty nine was starting the budget year, that's what we had. Then we got another check in like June. Sorry, not June, August was the budget year, it's not the two hundred and thirty. Because that seven sixty nine rings out to me, it's the number I carried when I made my mind up to make the motion at town meeting to go to one eighty five. So.
And we didn't spend any FEMA money last year, did we?
I don't think so.
We got over a million.
We didn't get the money though, so the actual check until March.
We got one check this year, four fifty one, four four six.
Yeah, that, that was the one we had. I don't remember. We got three like bang, 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 like in four months, I thought.
Yeah.
Either way, so you take that number, seven sixty nine sixty four.
Yep.
And then you get to go back to your expense report and subtract the FEMA.
You add, well, first go to the revenue, add the four fifty one, four four six, because we got that this year, is what it says.
Yes, and this is crazy. I'm a math genius and this is like.
And, well, expenses is going out, revenue is.
I get it, I get that. I just, I wish there was a cleaner way. I know you want to see an easy deal every day, but it's not like a checkbook.
If I do those budget adjustments, but how is revenue gonna?
It's, you're right, it's gonna change daily.
Every time that we get revenue, I would have to do another one. And I try not to mess with things I don't totally understand by heart. Yep.
So let me ask you this. Is there a way, I'm trying to think like what, what would be a good, like what, Summer Roads is one.
So FEMA, we spent four hundred and fifty thousand.
FEMA, FEMA, sorry, FEMA would be a good one. All right. What else are the big accounts that changes constantly? That's very.
All the grants are the same system.
You guys' administration, that's, that's, that is what it is. I don't really.
Everything in Fund One is there, all the budget amounts are there.
I mean.
I guess how big of a deal is it, every Sletman's meeting, to give me what's left in that FEMA total?
In a report or just give you the number?
In the treasury report, however you want to do it.
Just to tell you the number? I can do that.
That's all I need.
Okay.
Because I, I'm trying to think what else would be a, one that we would need to know often. I mean, the Winter Roads, Winter Roads is a set check once a month. Administration's is what it is, insurance, payroll, that's what it is what it is.
All of Fund One, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Mostly just Summer Roads and FEMA.
Yeah.
That's the same thing.
It's the same thing.
Everything's coming out of FEMA.
Yeah. Well, some.
The ARBA, we have the ARBA, we've been spending for Calburts, which we have to spend by each June. All the grants, the paving.
Yeah. Whatever you can think of that changes, like, that, that's the information I'm looking for.
Well, we're talking about the things that people get most up in arms about because they say we spend too much money, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, but.
Can you, would you mind, I'm, I'm a little bit slow. So you said page two of the general ledger. Which I see that. Can you just tell me though, you did say how to figure it out, and I'm.
So you take this number.
Right.
Then you're gonna go to revenue.
Revenue.
Which is right here.
Summary revenue.
Yeah, and then you go to FEMA, you got it right here.
Page four on the revenue.
Page four, I only got two pages on revenue.
You see Fund Two halfway through the page.
Special Reserve?
Special Reserve.
Oh, Fund Two, Special Reserve, I see.
Yep, FEMA, and we spent three eighty four oh five five nineteen.
That's revenue?
I mean, um, sorry, we received. No, I'm looking at the wrong, I'm looking at expense.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm like, we don't have four pages, so if you go to this one, yeah.
Four fifty one on the revenue. The last one, the page. That one.
You take that number, add it to that other number, seven sixty nine, and that's your total. And then you're gonna go back to what Leanne was just talking about here, in the expense report, summary expense. And you find FEMA right here.
You mean summary revenue?
Nope.
So revenue, revenue plus the general ledger, and then minus expense, what we paid up.
Revenue plus general ledger.
General ledger, because that has the balances.
Minus expense.
Right.
Thank you, I need the operation.
That's the same for every account.
Okay.
So we got roughly, quick math, eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars left in the bank account.
And I did print.
That's what we have?
That's, that's rough. That's, it's within ten grand.
I don't know if you want these or not, but I printed that Excel of my FEMA, which matches this, except I didn't put that warrant in there yet, so maybe it doesn't match.
I mean, the reality is, how long, how often do we get all of these reports so we can continually?
You get weekly.
You tell me. You tell me what you want, when you want them, and I'll get running.
You're getting there this week.
Right.
Usually I just give you expense something, and that's it.
Right. Well, if you have expense. You have the other two already.
No, you don't.
No.
You don't have the revenue.
No, I'm saying.
Which, the revenue, you're not gonna have any more revenue for FEMA anyways, but.
Yeah.
Yep, Fund One, those budget amounts don't change, but it shows what's left in each approved amount.
If you can, how big of a deal is to print the revenue and the, and the expense weekly?
Give us whatever you want.
One, every Sletman's meeting. I could create a spreadsheet and make my own checkbook.
Well, I could too. I could just put it right over into.
No, that's all right. You don't, you got enough stuff to do. But if you could just print the revenue and the expense, I could plug it into my thing, and then I'll have a running idea. It's not gonna be exact like yours will be, but it'd be close enough.
For every fund, one through four?
Sure. I mean, it's just a matter of hitting the print button, right?
Yep.
That's what I was trying to figure out. How, I mean, you told me before, but I needed to see the numbers to actually figure it out. All right. That.
Okay. Huh?
You sure?
Yep, you guys ready?
So do you want, you want the detail or do you just want the summary?
I just want whatever you got here, like the expense summary report and the summary revenue. The general ledger should stay the same, right?
Um, and in, not in the cash accounts, not in Fund One and the trust fund. They change as we get interest in the trust funds. Fund One changes all the time.
Okay.
There's three sections to the.
Then maybe you ought to do that one too.
General ledger, summary.
Yep. Yeah.
It's like when I do the, you'll look at the checking account reconciliation, I, I print out a detailed report just for the checking accounts, you can see that they match, the totals match, and include it with the checking account reconciliation.
So I understood that FEMA money had to be used on certain roads and meet complete certain projects. Now, once those projects are, which, which of those projects have been done versus not?
Well, there's two parts to that, it's a two-part answer. Some of those, some of that is true, and some of it's not true, some of it can go to anywhere. Some of it has to go to certain roads.
Do you want these?
Yeah.
Jim was gonna get with you, wasn't he? Did he?
I told him as long as everything on the FEMA list
Some can go, some.
is done, if all the work is done on those roads, if FEMA wants done, that's all you have to worry about.
Yeah. That's, that's how I told him too, so.
If we have leftover money, fine, we should use it somewhere else.
Right.
So, does that make sense? Remember before you elected, I explained to you that we had like two hundred and eight thousand, remember when we did the, um, when I did the presentation? There was like two hundred and eight thousand dollars that we could use anywhere because we had already used, we already spent money out of our town account, our town budget, to fix roads prior to getting the check.
Right.
Now, so we got reimbursed that amount, we can use that anywhere.
Right.
But like Leanne just said, as long as we fix the projects that FEMA gave us money for, there's gonna be extra.
Right.
The government went overboard and gave you extra.
They go by their rate, federal rates for everything.
So, whatever's left over, we can use, as long as those projects get fixed.
We can use on roads.
Correct, it has to be used on roads.
So on this report, it doesn't include that warrant, but I have it color-coded on my computer, but these darker highlighted ones towards the end, those are not FEMA projects. So I'm keeping a total.
Which ones?
Towards the end, there's really dark highlighted ones, those are not FEMA projects. And I have a total somewhere, make sure we don't go over that two hundred and eight thousand.
What page are you on?
Anything that has.
Just towards the end, there's really dark.
Oh, there's a white color?
Page nine.
The light.
The lights, FEMA?
Nope, towards the end, there's really dark highlighted ones.
No, okay, it says not FEMA, okay.
And then I'm looking for the total, I have the total on here somewhere.
Total expense draws?
No, I, off to the side, I have a total of the ones that aren't FEMA. I don't think I printed it, I think it was in, oh, the back. Fifty-three there on page eight on the back, we spent fifty-one thousand oh eight nine eighty-seven on projects that are not FEMA, out of that two oh eight that were allowed.
Oh, yeah.
Not including the checks that are on the table. They enter them out for the meeting. It's the only way I can think to keep track of this.
So.
Total refund. That two oh eight on the front page is what we can use on anything, is that what you said?
Yep, that's work that was done before we got the money, we used our budget last year.
Yep. Okay.
So these dark ones, we can go up to two oh eight, two thirty-one, right now we're up to fifty-one oh eight nine.
So like, on page ten, does that mean that, like, what, what are some of these ones that don't have invoices on page ten?
There's just no invoice number on the bills.
So that, well, I'm just saying, does that mean that work's been done if it's on this list?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So, I know you had a text message the other day from a town person, but you can see right here, town farmer orders on the FEMA list, it's supposed to be fixed.
Page?
Twelve. So obviously we receive, we receive money for town farm, which we received two different sections that I saw on this front page, that, back in twenty-three, which was probably prior to when we got the money, which is probably two thousand and eight, right, and all that town farmer was already been done.
That was emergency work.
Correct. So, town farmer was definitely on the list of FEMA's projects.
Yeah, I'd say so. Don't need the official document if it's on this list, obviously, because I would see there was.
Well, this, yeah.
I have, I copy every invoice, every check stub, because if they ask me, I have to have it right there.
Right, I was just gonna say, this is like cover your ass material, it is.
Right.
I sent this to the auditors too, because she had a bunch of questions.
Imagine looking at this all day?
I could have done a better job, probably.
If you're used to it, you might not be, you might not be that, but right now it's a little overwhelming. I like spreadsheets, we do them all day at work.
Well, I have a job for you.
Yeah.
Alright, I like this one.
Yeah, this is great.
Do you need these binders back?
No.
Okay.
Just remember, it changes every meeting. And you can put new ones in here.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I was thinking.
Get rid of it all.
Yeah. I think that answered my questions.
And I'll still, I'll wait for Trio, see if I can get the other one printed. I brought my budget book too, and.
What's a budget book?
Oh, you'll find out. Mine's a mess, because I took other stuff too.
You'll find out.
This is what we have all worked off.
Oh.
Budget meetings.
Gotcha.
You have original requests. You have that, that you have.
Well, that's got all the balance, all the funds in it.
Nope, fund one.
Just fund one.
Oh, will you raise money for?
Okay.
Request money for. No rates throughout the year.
Stupid question, but does this say that it's fund one somewhere, and I'm missing?
No, but it's all fund one, we don't, we don't raise money for the other funds.
I just don't want to ask you ever again. I'll remember.
I get, the actual requests that I can prove or receive, you know, have paper copies before, I put them in the same order as they come on the budget sheet. So here are the requests for money. And then the detail report showing prior expenditures, and if someone asks me, what did we spend that on, I can look it up.
Okay, that's perfect. Don't lose that. How, how, when do those, um, money requests start coming in?
I, before December, is it?
Yeah, I gotta send out email, I say December thirty-first, that we, we don't meet till April, but I gotta give the books, I gotta get that sheet already, so I give them a little bit of time if they're late.
So, let me ask you this. Do you send them out to everyone that we?
I just email a reminder to every, all the committees, assessors, anybody who you know, we budget for, that I can pick up.
A reminder that it's due December thirty-first.
Budget requests are due December thirty-first.
One year of chat association, we've got to put one in.
And, yeah, and by the time they said anything, our budget meetings were over, I think we'd already had.
Who?
Like, like the association.
Yeah, like.
I guess that's where I was going with, the conservative person reminded me, is saying that, I was thinking that it's their responsibility to reach out.
Yep.
Why are we reminding them? But, that's.
Especially, especially social services.
That's what I mean.
You don't even have to include those if you don't want to, but we seem to.
And that's just, that's just the way my conservative mind works, is that if you, if you want to ask for money, you should have that on your calendar to ask.
But the, the committees and stuff, I mean, we want to know.
I understand those guys, the committees, like, but.
You mean the outsiders?
Yeah.
But if they, if they don't know.
We don't, we don't send them to, like, Channel Ten and all of those.
Okay.
More or less the ones we actually care about, I didn't say that.
Ones that have email addresses, if I have an email address for them, I'll, I'll include them.
But if they don't know the deadline, then they're, they're always going to be missing the boat.
Correct.
And during the budget meetings, you'll get some loose ones in there, you know? But after the budget meetings are over, I would say no.
Lovely, that was helpful for me.
So this here, we looked this over and.
Yeah, we go line by line.
Think if we need to make any changes.
And the, on your budget worksheet, where it says requested? Most of those are mine, I just, I try to make bold the actual request that I receive on paper. But I try to fill in my best guesses for the rest, just so we have a total to go by, you know, and then you guys can mark off that.
Yep. So, the one thing that I want to ask or request is, I noticed in last year, I think the year before, that there was a lot of jumping around from line to line, to what, is there any reason why we can't go right down through?
Can.
Well, you guys are gonna meet first, get your, your recommendation in. Budget committee is the round committee, we have.
Yeah, I get that, but the selectmen, to make our recommendation, is there any reason why we have to go from page twelve, or whatever, I'm just guessing numbers? Why can't we just go right, is there a reason why they're jumping around, or was it?
Did the selectmen jump around?
Yeah.
Are you talking about in a selectmen's meeting, you walked?
In the budget workshop, whatever it's called.
For the selectmen?
For the selectmen, there was a lot of jumping from.
Maybe we were waiting for information.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, is it?
I don't remember, I remember we had one in the office. But, yes, and the selectmen always go to the budget committee meetings, just, but.
Can't say nothing.
Right, it's their, it's their meeting, so if they have questions, fine, and then we'll have you guys meet again, do you want to change any of these according to what the budget committee says, or?
Yeah, okay. So, but, back to my question, there's no reason, unless we're waiting for information, we can't go right down the list.
Right.
Okay, good.
A lot of times they'll put numbers in and make a star, and if they want to go back to it later.
Okay, we watched that. Training.
You want to, you want to do next year's budget right now?
Um, just something that I know I've been asked, and I don't know the answer. Can you think of anywhere in here that we can save?
Me?
Can save?
Just, you don't even have to answer me now, but just something to think about.
I mean, we cut so much last year, I don't know.
And that's what I don't know, I don't, that's what I want the, I guess I gotta look at that too, to see what was actually cut.
Well, you have approved in, I don't know, we don't.
Yeah.
Well, approved oh five, oh five is oh four oh five, oh six is oh five oh six, so you have those two years to compare to.
Which ones?
Oh five and oh six, oh six is the current year.
You mean twenty-six?
I mean twenty-six.
Okay, I'm like, holy smokes, most of these.
Twenty-five and twenty-six.
They're long decked.
Okay, yeah.
But even though we budgeted money, you want to know what we actually spent to go by.
Right.
So.
I mean, if we cut money last year, but we still went over, I mean, that's good to know. But if we budgeted over and didn't spend, that's the stuff I'm looking for.
Well.
But I'm not gonna.
We're supposed to make sure we don't go over and.
Well, I, I get that, but you look at, where is it here? Approved training, five hundred dollars, and we went over by a hundred and fifty-five, I mean, obviously those are nickels and dimes, but I'm just saying.
Administration. Well, the road commissioner didn't use a lot of his budget in prior year, so that left, it always seems to be a little leeway in administration. So we don't worry so much, but we still gotta keep an eye on it.
And I guess, that led me to, you just led me to another question, is, yeah, you gave us this, every, the spent, expense report every selectmen's meeting. Can you let us know, is there any bells and whistles that can go off to let us know if we're getting close? Okay, because I just.
Yeah, because I'm not supposed to be paying bills if it goes over budget.
Well, I know that, but it's nice to know that if we're, if we're getting near it.
Yeah, the expense report will tell you.
Slack off.
Yeah.
Fund one, you do get a balance, what's left in each line.
Where?
In the expense summary report, summary. Now that the budget's in there, you'll have budget, what's spent, and what's left.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for, so.
Just, just fund one, not FEMA, fund two or three, whatever it is to, just fund one, this is what we raised taxes to pay.
So we'll use, we'll use you for example, uh, zero four, page one. We have fifty-four thousand seventeen oh six left?
Yep. I just have to look because the detail reports, the total's at the bottom, so the some, and the summary's at the top.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Unextended balance, yes.
So we, we budget eighty-nine thousand, and so far we've spent fifty-four.
Don't say that, I don't, I don't make eighty-nine thousand.
No, no, it's, it's. It's for much more than that, though, sick time, personal time, retirement, right?
Yep.
Health insurance.
Health insurance is a big one. Yeah, so the, what was approved at town meeting is in the budget net.
Okay.
Debits are the expenses, sometimes you'll see a credit if I make a mistake and have to back it out.
Okay, well, that's, that's basically what I was looking for.
And, right, it just doesn't cover FEMA.
Right.
Right, and that's what I was saying, I could put the budget amount, that first column, into the other funds.
Yeah.
And then you would get a balance, unless we get revenue in, and see, I don't like thinking that hard.
Well, what, what, I, I guess my question would be, is what's so hard about, can you print? Are we calling FEMA funds two, if this is fund one?
No.
Fund two is special revenues, all, like, the grants, and they're all under that fund.
The roads are in here, right?
Roads is fund one.
I mean, yeah, so they're in this report. So we have the road budget.
Right.
It's, it's just because the, the FEMA score comes up, once FEMA's gone, it won't be an issue. That road budget will be in there, you'll know exactly what you have left.
Right.
This is just a special circumstance.
I'll, I'll think about that tomorrow, to get that budget in there. I just hate to do some of them and not the other.
I guess my question is, is there, I don't understand what you're pondering, but is there a way to get a FEMA report that looks like this?
I would have to do a journal entry, see that first column, budget net?
Yep.
I would have to do a journal entry to get the balance in there.
Yep.
But there's ten, fifteen other accounts at the same weight.
Oh.
I would like to do them all or none, but like the rec committee money keeps coming in, so.
Right.
I would have to keep changing it.
But this is one that.
I can do that. Just do the FEMA. I'll start with the FEMA, see what happens.
Control Z. You say control Z, it don't work. It don't work for everything I have to do.
Well, that wouldn't help us though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know how that would affect it end of year, because at end of year, everything rolls over on. We'll just do the FEMA, and that's it.
To that.
All right, dumb question. On this expense report, I'm just seeing Pratt Hill Road. Is that because that, in this particular?
It's only when we spent money out of that month, maybe?
Is that, is that what that means essentially?
Well, we had a little bit besides the bond payment to, that we could spend out of our budget.
Yep.
So I s- how much, there's a tiny bit left. I only spent ninety-six point six four percent of what we budgeted for, one eighty-five.
Yep.
So I spent some of our invoices out of this budget.
So when people get up in arms about how we, I mean, two months ago, I believe I heard somebody, well, jeez, they've already spent all the money. They don't really have a, a solid understanding of the fact that we have FEMA money that we can also use on some things.
Right, we spent that in prior years, that two hundred and eight thousand out of our regular budget.
Right.
And we just got refunded.
So according to this, we have sixty-two hundred dollars left on summer road budget.
Right.
Yeah. Good.
Yeah, I'll use that up before the year end. It just, I hate to break up. If I get an invoice for three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, I hate to take two hundred and fifty dollars out of here and three thousand. So I just stopped.
Right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I don't want, like, s- stuff like summer roads rolling into the general account.
Hmm, no.
Well.
Because the townspeople voted on that money to use, the summer roads.
In two thousand eighteen, I wasn't here, there was an article saying that there, anything left in the summer roads' expense account, they voted on it at a town meeting, would go into a reserve. And I asked MMA Legal, I said, does that continue every year? Do we have to vote on that every year? And he said, oh, no, that continues. So we did that for a couple of years. The balance went into the re- the summer road reserve. And then my auditor said, no.
Really?
You have to vote on that every year. So last year, the selectmen said, no, we don't want an article to put the remainder into as a reserve. So we didn't.
So you mean.
But you can, you can, if you want, any of these. We did for legal this year. Anything left in legal is going to go into the legal reserve. Because there was an article for that.
I don't think there's going to be any left.
Hey!
Sorry to not see it now, because I did.
We usually do a pretty good job of spending the road.
Well, it should. That's the most important thing in town, because people driving up your day.
Yep.
I, I, yeah.
We had an issue with the winter sand, the auditor, because we were, for years and years and years, would fill the sand and saw that before June thirtieth. But it was for the next year, so the auditor said, no, you can't do that. And she made us move the money back, the expense back to, um, no, forward to the next year that we had spent in June.
So we're in the hole already before we even went to town meeting?
Yeah.
That's brilliant.
Yep.
So what would she have done if the town didn't approve it?
We didn't have to go to town meeting for that. What do you mean? She said that expense goes out of your next year.
Right, well, I'm saying, say the town didn't want to approve the winter road budget at town meeting. That's where it come out of, right?
And then you guys have to pick it out of your pocket.
Yeah. It doesn't make any sense to me that she would do that, but okay.
So on page six, I'm just kind of reading you something of the expense summary report. It could be any old page, it doesn't matter, but it says winter roads continued, and then it says oh five material, twenty supplies, hundred and ten thousand, and then below that it's fifty and sixty. So is that just a breakdown of where that one ten goes?
Yep.
Okay.
Because our code number has four sets of two-digit numbers.
Okay.
Throughout. To be, oh, once, I mean, um, yeah, seventeen oh five, twenty, twenty year.
To go back to, I mean, this is, like I said, I'm a little bit slower, so now that I'm seeing something like this, which we haven't used any of that money yet because we haven't entered winter, so that a hundred and ten thousand is essentially what was approved at the town meeting, I'm assuming.
For materials, yeah. But we voted on all of winter roads as one.
Yeah.
So it was four hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I have my town report if you want to compare.
Well, I guess I was just kind of curious because winter road is a pretty good example, like, where, I'm not totally up on where to go for everything. What, I guess it's probably fund one, um, budget worksheet, right? So we can see what was used in previous years.
Well, no, you can't. Oh, yeah, you can't actually.
Well, I was just kind of curious, like, okay, we decided four hundred eighty-five thousand, like, what if we don't? I don't know how to find.
Except for the sand's going to be a little funky a couple of years because, because of that, spent it the wrong year issue. And the change with the auditors is we had the same monitors for years, and then they go quit. Now you have new people, they're, you know, seeing different things.
So you were saying about the coding, so looking at this, it's overwhelming, but you look for oh five, I, I guess?
Winter roads is seventeen. That worksheet might not have all the account numbers either, because like I said, I plug everything in there. But it's at the end, after summer roads.
Oh, I see, there's a summer road each. I got you.
The order stays the same every year.
Yep. I think this, I mean, this is interesting. Going through a work level navigating this effing mess.
Well, summer roads didn't, some roads didn't used to list every single road. It used to be a lot.
Yeah.
But everyone kept talking and complaining about there was no detail, how much went towards this road, that road. It seemed like a good way to keep track of how much was spent on each road, but.
How much excitement went into Pratt Hill, I can understand why they want to, you want to have that broken down.
Well, this was back oh five, when we got Triumph.
So. Oh yeah, like you said earlier, on top on one report and on bottom on the other.
Um, the summary, the totals are at the top, and I know, and everything else is at the top.
I was just saying that the summary had the, the total at the top, and on this one, it has the total at the bottom. So all these different, so yeah, that four eighty-one, five. What years did you see were the odd ones?
Must have been twenty-five, because that's somewhere three forty-five.
That's what I was wondering, yeah.
Yeah, it was recently twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it seems like it's fairly constant, consistent. This has been good.
And there's other reports too. There's a journal, what, the journal, um, journal detail report, which shows every transaction all in one, which I run once in a while, just to make sure I haven't made any mistakes.
What's interesting to me is this six hundred and eighty-three thousand that was requested at the town meeting, is that because there was a lack of understanding in how much FEMA money we had perhaps?
Yes, and, no, three hundred thousand of it was for paving.
Three hundred was for paving and the rest was not being, okay. And then we real, we, I mean, that's a big difference. So what we, obviously, had a better understanding of our FEMA money's ability to use this and that. That's why we dropped it way down.
Yes, next to the school, I think, winter and summer roads combined, it's like the biggest cost of this kind of.
Definitely.
Yep.
And I figured in January, at one of your first, one of your meetings in January, we'll start talking about the bids that need to go out and schedule town meeting and nomination papers and all that stuff, beach policy.
Yes, we gotta bring, I, I thought about that, we gotta bring that up to that woman that, that's the Airbnb stuff.
What's that?
That woman, I don't remember her name, but.
There were a couple of them.
Yeah.
Nora.
When you told her we would have to wait for the first few years, we can't let that slide. We ought to do it in December, actually. In case someone comes in, not that anyone's going to come in in January, but.
Yeah, I, well, I like to order the stickers and start selling when I can.
Right, so we ought to have it ready for January first.
You want to do it in December?
Yeah.
What was the nominations you were talking about?
For selectmen, budget committee, I think the school board, I mean, um, not budget committee, I think our school board members up this June. Um, road commissioner might be, he's only in it two years.
Yeah, he's, he just got elected while I did, so. I'm good. Take a break before the real show starts.
Gives you a better understanding.
I'm.
What you want.
Always ask questions because it makes me think and look at things.
Way better than I was an hour ago, put that way.
Right, so I'll have those reports at every meeting, and I'll get the budget into the FEMA account.
So just live in this book for a little while, I'm sure I can figure it all out. I do have a question about this FEMA sheet, though, because there's work that hasn't been done.
That's, that's all been done.
Oh, this has been done.
Yeah, there was one little section, I wasn't sure which disaster it was, which project number.
So it's on this, it's been done?
Yes.
I was just, we just haven't processed payment yet.
Yeah, I wish, I wasn't sure which project that went to.
I got you. All right, so that still takes, it's funny how you always have another question after a question. Where's the list of stuff that hasn't been done?
We have the FEMA project lists that show every little detail that has to be done.
Yes.
Three, three disasters.
Yep.
But we know what needs to be done, we know how much money we have. That's why I said, instead of trying to get exact, all right, we did this one, we spent this, but just make sure all the roads are fixed, like FEMA says they're fixed.
Right.
And we're good.
Right. I was just curious, like, where are we at in the timeline of what had to happen? Like, who manages that? Is that something BIM kind of, it's? Well, like, if we were supposed to fix Tucker Road, for example, like, we have the money for it, but we haven't done it yet.
We, we have to get them all done by June of twenty-six.
Okay. I was just curious where that list was, or, or like, how, where.
I don't know if he had, I don't know what he has listed for not done.
For what?
So far.
I was just more or less asking, like, if, if there's FEMA work that has to still be completed, how, how would somebody like me know what that is?
You can.
You have fun, good luck. You're not going to, I spent hours looking for that paperwork.
Okay.
And the road created, and BIM did, and then I.
BIM's one, because BIM and CATHY probably get the most knowledge because they walk around FEMA.
Right.
So.
As, as long as those roads are fixed up.
Right.
To FEMA standards.
Right.
Which a majority of them, I think, have been.
Yeah.
I don't think he's touched.
The worst ones.
I don't think he's touched Buckfield side of town, like Swamp Pond, stuff like that, but.
He did some work up in Swamp Pond.
Yeah, but I had told him, um, they're logging in there, and I didn't really want to think it'd be a good idea to spend money up there for log trucks going in and out. So I think he's waiting till spring to do the majority of it up there, but.
He did, he did finish a one-on-one garden road.
Yeah.
Which is good.
That's good.
We still on, are we muted?
You want me to mute it, we'll take a break?
Yeah. Yeah.
Sech, oops, came back on.
Check. Good sign.
It heard that, it heard that door on that microphone?
Yeah, I think we need to grease that damn thing. No, I think they need to pry the wood away from it on the hinges. Talk about that.
Four, six thirty, six twenty-nine, whatever. Wait, we're bringing the meeting to order. Is it six, six twenty-nine? Please, please.
Please, please.
Two hundred minutes, October 21st, 2025, Sleckman's meeting in GA Heron.
Why do I have November 5th?
Yeah, November 5th.
I should say November 5th, sorry.
Yeah, that's.
Jerry?
I'll make motion.
I'll second that motion. Why, thank you.
Let me see, here we approve warrant number nine, includes FEMA reserve expenditure draws, payroll warrants, November 5th, 2025, and November 12th.
So.
2025.
Before we do that, uh, can we talk about these doors before we approve that payroll warrant? Because I think their final payment, two payments are in there. There's two checks, one for eighteen something, one for nine. What was the nine, is that for insulation?
One was for installation, insulation, and one's for the doors and windows.
Can, correct me if I'm, tell me if I'm not right, but can we approve one of the two? Or we're just doing both? So I think we ought to get them back here, if we don't, if we pay them.
That, Bob.
That, that door's gonna get fixed, doesn't even latch, doesn't, the hardware's screwed up, you can't, you can't lock it.
Well, I thought he was coming back the day they was redoing insulation, and they were sending someone this week, or this week, or some call. Do you want to wait until next meeting?
Well, I hate to make them wait two more weeks, but anyway, what other choices do we have? I mean, if we pay them, if we give them final payment, they have no reason to come back and fix it. I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem giving them the nine thousand dollar one for the insulation, but that, that door is useless right now. A good wind will blow that open.
Not to mention this inner wooden door, the hinge is dragging on a trim, and that's what I suspected is the squealing. I mean, that could be, should, it'd be nicer if that was adjusted before we called the project complete.
So, did you have something? You asked if we're gonna add it to the agenda, did you have something you wanna add to this?
Um, well, it's just that we have money left over from the grant. So Jalen and I were talking, wondering if we could, um, use it for maybe a hood over the stove, because it's kind of related, or windows in the bathroom. Basement windows.
How much left?
Um, I have it, I wrote it down somewhere else on it. It was like eleven thousand.
Well, I did it over the stove, I didn't, you need power up there.
What's that?
You need power up there to do that.
It'd be nice to have.
I can't remember, I taped into something. I'm pretty sure it was eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand that's left?
Is there a bid came in a little low, the stove getting cut as much as we thought?
So, can we take that?
What, go ahead.
What? Can we take the money that we were going to use to do the riser? Did we already appropriate that from the?
Yeah, we did.
I was wondering.
But, but I submitted a grant application for twelve, twelve windows, two doors, a stove.
Oh, so you can associate it to the stove, sort of?
Yeah.
I see what you're saying.
And I'm not sure about the windows, I might have to ask first, but, because I, I'm gonna have to return that money if we don't spend it.
Yeah, might as well spend it.
Yeah, um, when do we need to know that? When do we need to spend the money?
I think we have until, is it June 26th, something 26th?
Let's, um, before, I mean, this is my recommendation, before we make a decision, let's make sure that for some reason they don't try to kind of have to more money to fix this.
Door?
Yeah. But I'm all for the hood and whatever, but I think we ought to wait until this is completed before we make any decisions on what to do with the remainder.
At least if we need electrical for the hood that clearly covers it.
Yeah. So I guess at this point, I'll make a motion, I don't remember what warrant that's in, it must be on this one.
It's wonderful.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the warrant, with the exception of the check for eighteen thousand.
Yeah. Beat it.
So half of these checks.
We didn't want to pay for the insulation.
It's up here. Make a motion to throw all the warrants, except for the check for to RHB and SUN buildings for eighteen thousand five eighty-nine, and totally get the, the doors fixed correctly.
Hold on. It says insulation of town hall. Is that what you were thinking?
Oh, that was gonna say, I thought they said it was the.
Windows, door.
That's the windows and doors?
Ninety-one thirty.
Okay, so that's the only one that would open, the ninety-one thirty.
Hey, how many did you swap away?
We're on it.
Ninety-one hundred?
Ninety-one thirty, yep. It's not drop, it's not grease that's needed, it's dragging on the wood, trim.
On favor? Wait, who seconded?
I second.
On favor? Okay, before.
Okay, before we move on, um, I'd like to add a couple of things to the agenda.
Yeah.
Um, one, we need, um, an executive session added at the end. What was that number again, Leanne?
Um, it's the same as on here, but F.
Pursuant to F. And also, well, I guess we had the board of managers.
Am I assigned this?
My second. On favor?
And then also, I'd like to add, um, Ben is requesting, um, wondering if we can use, if he can use the salt shed for some personal sand and salt for a roadie's plowing. So I'd like to add that to the agenda, new business, to talk about that. And if we can, if we can do that prior to anything else, new business, we haven't hung around the whole meeting, that'd be great. Like the first item. You can second it?
I second that.
Go through that.
Can we also add reviewing the quote from Austin Electronics?
Second.
On favor?
Yeah, now we can go.
This is so he can get paid?
No, this is for perspective, he's doing electrical for the TV set. And anybody get paid for that.
I can see it, I think we got it.
Yeah, I just came in, hot off the press.
Okay, RSU ten director report. Nothing, right?
No.
Lord Commissioner.
Does that Rick or Hill Road based on a complaint, or is that not?
That's coming up, it's coming up.
Isn't it?
Oh, yes, yeah, we'll talk about that when you do it.
Constable report. Cam?
Yeah.
Hmm, good. C E O?
Nothing, that's all.
A C O? Afternoon.
Did they find that dog, you know?
No, I have to take this right now.
No?
I hope they, if, oh, okay, but it's fine. That's his dog? Yes. Yeah, so I don't need to look through the bottom of the list, right? No sign of it, which has, what she said is nothing but solid, usually, I don't know.
Fire one report, no requests or requests, good. Treasury report?
Oh, there's my sticky. Yeah, eleven thousand, wait, there's the bank, where's the money?
Somebody has a red truck, your cat light is on.
Oh, thank you so much, that's my truck, and it almost takes about, mm, shut off.
I did reach out, I'm not gonna put it in your pocket, but I did reach out about whether a comprehensive plan is required for grants and.
I saw that.
Yep.
Everyone said no.
I don't remember ever having that initial list.
Yeah, you have. Are you losing your mind?
I legit don't remember that at all.
Okay, let's see, road committee approved minutes.
Um, they're meeting tomorrow, or like?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, they're meeting tomorrow.
So, this, I think, uh, solid waste is he had tomorrow too, so come on, I'll be in the kitchen like we were one night, so.
You call it, Dips? Okay, good, I'm going with you.
Planning board approved minutes. The ad hoc planning committee approved. Do you have those? Peggy?
Can I ask a question about something for the ad hoc planning?
Yep.
So, I just saw an email from Leanne saying that the online questionnaire is too cumbersome to fill out because it would take Jalen too much time. You're the one to do it, and I made it, right, but I don't know anything about this technology, can't you just download the answers and send them?
It's a website, to put it on the website, it's gonna be web-based.
Say that again?
To put it on the website, it has to be web-based, and I don't have the capability to do that. I had to go through, I did a Bluebeam phone fillable version.
Yeah.
And the only way to do that would be, you'd have to have in a PDF program, you'd have to download that file.
Yeah.
Fill it out, and then email it back to town.
Oh, I see, I see, so, so, so the form is there for people to download it, so do we?
It's a, where it's eleven pages.
But it's misleading because it looks like you can fill it in, if you just have the blank form, then people would know they had to do that. No, that's what we're talking about.
It has to be web-based, and I don't have the.
Right, the, the techno, the time involved to get it working is too much, so if we could just put the plain blank form there for people to click it and then.
As it was, I had to redo half the, half the survey anyways, because the way it was written was circle, and that's not an option in the phone filler.
Oh, my goodness.
So I, I spent an hour and a half, two hours redoing that whole thing.
All right, well, then we have to put some kind of disclaimer that the, the online version isn't available, they have to take care of it.
The only other option would possibly be Google Forms. I don't, I don't have enough time to draw your first students out.
And I just started writing a, a way to, to collate the answers, and that's gonna take me quite a while, because it's ten pages.
Right. Well, the good thing about Google Forms is it'll summarize the responses for you.
Right, really? Well, see, this is the thing, we don't all have time to discuss all these possibilities, but we actually try to.
Right.
Well, a lot of people online send the, what is it, Survey Monkey or something?
True.
They have different programs.
Yeah, that's another one.
Is that screen for using with your computer when it gets up, when?
We're gonna talk about that tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, let's see, where do we go?
Ordinance.
Ordinance committee approved minutes. She is. Cemetery committee?
We haven't met in some time.
No. Solid waste, approved minutes.
I don't think we had any.
No, see, it is tomorrow.
Recreation committee approved minutes.
They just, I didn't bring them over, they just sent an email at like quarter of five, and it was a compilation, compilation, how do you say that, of six or seven meetings all together, so I gotta figure that out.
Okay.
Do you want them all together?
Yeah, that's how they did it.
Open session. Do you have anything, Peggy?
So, about the whole scanning project, um, because I had Neil make a computer for me, I paid him for extra time to tell him more about things, and something else has come up, it turns out that the, it's hard to find this information, but the ideal format for scanning things for archival purposes is not a plain PDF, it's called a PDF slash A, and that format is so, it keeps the same fonts and things, so subtle things in it can't be changed, kind of locks it in a different way. So, um, I'm trying to find out if my scanner will do it, which I can't really figure out, and whether your scanner does it. So I'm, Neil is going to be coming to the town office, we haven't signed on a time yet, sometime on Monday, so we can at least figure out if that scanner will do that format. And there exists conversion program, so things that have already been scanned can be converted into this archival format, but I've gotta talk to him and work this all out, I'm just telling you, there's technical things that are, that are not straightforward, and I'm learning as I get further into this. And the second thing is, I, I asked Leanne to print out all the minutes and agendas from the planning board for twenty twenty-four because those documents were all born digital, and as we get moving forward with the scanning, we should consider at a town, as a town, at least we can do it for a planning board, when our documents are going to be from that date forward, all digital, I mean, at some point, you have to make a, a conversion date. Because right now, we're going backwards and reprinting things out, just because we have to have paper archives until we, you know, finish the scanning project. At some point, you need to decide that things are gonna be all digital, and I'll probably be first in the planning board because we've been all digital since, uh, at least twenty-two. Just things that are.
You tell, Polly?
All right, good afternoon, I'm not a speaker, I pump that class thing call. Our food bank has surpassed anything we could have imagined. We are now being forced to go to four times a week, I mean, a month, every week, because we just have too many customers. We need volunteers, people that can make a commitment, because I've got to have basically four different groups of nine people. If we have nine people per session, distribution day, we can function really well. Right now, what do we got, maybe fifteen?
You're saying you need thirty-six, you know, like.
We got four weeks, we're doing four weeks?
I'm doing one, three, two, and four.
No. Oh, we gotta have enough people, because I don't want people getting burned out. We have packets that come in the week before and pack all the orders that we get in. We have people that go to Good Shepherd, donate their time, their truck. Kathy knows about that, she's one of the volunteers that does it. They go every Friday now, well, we're hoping to do it relatively soon, but, um, we need people to unload those trucks, minimum weight is forty pounds, and most of us at the food bank are old folks like me. You know, it's, well, yeah, it, it's hard, so we need some people, if you know anybody, that can donate even a couple of hours a month, is what we need. I mean, I need packets, I need truck unloaders, I need people to work distribution day. We have three different areas when we do distribution. We have what's called the pantry, the kitchen, and produce. When we get people into the dooryard, we have a list of who's there, so we pull their orders. That their order form then goes to the pantry, where they pack all the frozen and dairy products that we have. Then they send that package back to us in the kitchen, that's what then goes to produce, who pack up all the products that we give up. And then, when it's all completed, it goes out the door. I will not send a package out that door unless everything is there. We've had too many mess-ups before, when things went out the door and they didn't have the whole order, we have to make phone calls to go and deliver it, so now, nothing we can do.
What was the total that we had in this week?
He didn't get that tweet, I know.
No.
So, I'm, I'm confused, how, how often does this take place?
Right now, it's twice a month.
Okay. And what day of the week is it on?
Mondays, first and third Monday.
So, have you thought about doing it on a Saturday, when people might not be working?
We, that is an option for people if they wanna do it.
So that lets when Turner does it?
But, we have a pickup on Saturday morning at Hannaford. Hannaford has been a great source of food supplies for us. We only have right now three people that will come and pick up on Saturday, because then we have a truck driver and maybe one other person putting the Hannaford stuff away. So we don't have anybody available to go and work the extra hours. I have people come on Sunday at the church, I'm there, it's no biggie to me. So, you're suggesting switching from on range of Saturday?
Yeah.
That's what I thought I was hearing.
What time, what are the hours that?
Nine to twelve right now.
So, this is, this is another, not really a question, but, and this may not be a very popular comment, but what about asking some of the people that are, are taking advantage, or not advantage, taking, um, making use of the food bank, that maybe having them volunteer, I mean, if they're available to pick up for nine to twelve?
We have quite a few of our customers that are volunteering. We just picked up, what, one, two, three, three more that are customers.
My instincts tells me that the unfortunate part of those hours is that you can't capitalize on high school kids because not every kid's gonna play sports, not every kid's gonna, there might be, there might be some, I don't know if that would be an option, but.
There's vacations that it happens to fall on that time, we do, we have kids come in and help.
It's a great community service that can be coordinated with somebody like Gretchen Kimball, who can, I don't, just, that's my thought.
We thought about that, and, because I always thought there was a community service program where kids could do that.
Right.
But after, yeah, and some range, who we haven't been able to get them.
They did just once, didn't they?
I'll, I'll reach out to, I'll reach out to Troy, the principal of the high school, see if, I'll, actually, I got contact with Gretchen, too, my son works with Gretchen quite often, so I'll reach out to both of them.
You know, we, we can't provide transportation.
Right.
That's a problem I've had with, we have a family in town that do not have a vehicle.
Like a scumber, something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they cannot get to the food tent. So.
But again, the conflict would be, if we were trying to get high school kids, it's, if it's nine to twelve, I don't think that would, job.
I don't know, I, I can reach out.
But if they could come, if they could come, um, even to help unload the trucks?
Right.
That would be a big help.
Can you message me, like, when you need, yeah, people, I'm not gonna remember this, I'm not, I don't wanna write it all down now, but just send me a message on Facebook?
Yeah.
What you, hours, days, when you need people, and I'll send an email to the school and see what they can do.
I could do that. It's, you know, it gets really frustrating when you're trying to do stuff. Lee can access to that, she sat out in the parking lot for an hour and a half, might be almost to wait because. to wait because when we first open, we have people in the parking lot at eight o'clock and they expect to be waiting on right then and there.
Oh man, difference so.
We have a meet, we have meetings and once we move all those problems around and get situated, we have a meeting at eight thirty to go over what's going to happen, who's working where and whatnot. After, I mean, you don't have to change just because they choose to sit there. Oh, I know, but when I, at nine o'clock, when we officially opened, I had a stack of orders thirty to forty deep.
Wow.
And it was a nightmare. No, because one thing, we don't have storage space in our storage room, so when we pack orders.
Leanne?
Oh, she's still talking, I'm just waiting.
Talk about it, I need to talk to Neil about it. But in our back storage room, when we packed orders, we have one six-foot table and two shelves to put stuff on. We packed seventy seventy-two orders last week. No place to put it. We had it stacked up on top of storage stuff, way over our head, everywhere. And then on Monday morning, we were in the, where's this and where's that and it's a hunt and search.
Leanne?
So do you pack orders as requested? Why can't you just put, have a basic box with the essentials in it, the same for everybody?
No, we will not do that. That leads to too much waste. The way we do it, we have an order form. People check off what they want, so we're not, they're not throwing food away.
You don't get it till that morning?
No, we get it during the week, the week before. We usually Tuesdays and Fridays when the truck comes in. Because every other Friday is what's called senior box day. So we can't pack the senior orders until we know what's in the senior box. And that's the essentials. Yeah, it's uh
Those are boxes that you get what they're used to.
Yeah, whether it's something you wouldn't use or it's a good box. A lot of food in it for seniors. No, and uh but it does cost because we never know what's coming.
Yeah. I think, like I said, I'll reach out to starting point, I don't I don't, besides switching days to a weekend day, I don't you can't force people to do it. And the hours that you're doing it, nine to twelve is that's when you're going to get you retired people like yourself to do it.
It's not just nine to twelve that we need help.
No, I get, I get it, and that's one of my things that I want to send me, hours, days, and location, where you need people.
That's why I asked about the closet, because I know at the food bank, you can work under that closet.
The closet's full right now.
Full of it.
Can't be any more than our storage room. But I don't know, I don't know what others do that, so it's a new point right now. I just know we can't, we can't build all of it anymore. I'm sure that it's built up, it's found, they know. Can't go up. I only have one more suggestion, I have to talk to them about going down underneath the building. Never takes some work. You know, it's it's crazy, I just, you know, hopefully we can disinvolve them here. I don't care if it's one day a month.
Hope so. Anybody else have anything?
We are having the change for buy nothing free sale, which was the preferred phrase anyway.
I put buy nothing sale.
I know, you always just put free sale and we changed it to free sale.
For some money.
Exactly, anyway. Yeah, people can spread the word, I mean, it's all over Facebook.
So it's free, but it's a sale?
Wow. It's a little bit like a free store.
When is it?
Yeah, it's like a free store.
Okay.
Anyway, we're hoping to have a greater participation.
I'll get you that planter.
Six and seven?
Six and seven?
Accepting donations, is that part of that?
Yes, Friday night, we'll take in stuff. And we are, if somebody can't make it four to seven on Friday and then, you know, they come personally on Saturday.
Yep.
And then Saturday is nine to four. And then if we have to, we do clean up on Sunday, but I stressed in the notes that I put out that there isn't a bulky waste, so everything has to be reused.
Right.
And it'll be people from that.
Right, and only people from our we had a few requests, people who are used to having them swatched.
Uh, gee, can we burn stuff?
That's why I made that comment I made the other night on
Right.
about that, so just so you know.
Yeah, I mean, they can come shop, come here if you want.
We can come take their stuff, we can bring our stuff in.
Especially if they work.
Yeah.
Anyway, just wanted to remind everyone.
Yep, good.
Great.
Okay, calendar reminders. Road committee meeting November nineteenth, six thirty. Slutman meet with Buckfield and Sumner in Buckfield, eleven twenty-first, at six o'clock. Yes, we also meet with them December fourth.
Uh, no, I'm just, I'm just looking, I think it's the second.
Is it the second? I think it's the third.
You might be right, the third.
I thought it was the fourth.
Nope, it is
Third.
Is it the third?
Not there.
Four thirty, right?
Yeah.
Uh, what?
Oh, I didn't tell you that, it got moved to four thirty.
What are you talking about?
Oh, you're on the wrong one. I knew you were wrong.
You talking about, oh, you talking about the thing on Monday?
The school wants us to meet with them, Troy.
I know, we're talking about something else. Oops, wrong one.
December first, four thirty. That's the superintendent, assistant superintendent.
Yeah. That thing.
Yeah. Don't ask her what the meeting's about because they change it every time.
I even have it on my calendar.
I'll send you one.
In terms of, and in terms of the calendar, apologies, Leanne, for all the changes, but as the ordinance committee and fellow ways committee have built membership, we've switched around to accommodate new people and you know, some of these other town trips. So we're hoping that it will be tight now.
Okay, ad hoc comprehensive plan committee, November twenty-fifth, six thirty. Planning board meeting, December first, six thirty. Uh, taxes are due, December first. Slutman meeting, December second, at six thirty.
Can I add something to this?
Yeah.
The one I was talking about was the RSU.
Yeah, it'll probably be on the next meeting, that's why I saw it on there, because it's the summer third after our slutman meeting.
Right. Well, it's still a good reminder to have that it's going to be the very next day. But you're not making note of it now or?
Which one is that one?
RSU ten withdrawal committee, December third.
Have you appointed a committee?
No, we got to talk about that.
I think he probably talked about that.
Wouldn't it be up to the committee when to schedule a meeting?
I think Chad's kind of informally said it.
Yeah, it's actually a placeholder.
All right, December third.
Six thirty to eight.
Where?
To be.
Town office?
No, to be determined.
Okay. And finish in deal.
Sorry, just to sort of answer that question you had, we're going to be appointing that committee on December second, the thir, the Tuesday, the Tuesday meeting on December second.
So that's going to be, well, we have appointments on your agenda anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, unfinished business, RSU ten withdrawal process.
We're just talking about that.
Three steps.
Well.
This is just a letter that's the
Right.
Department of Education's saying for step five, right?
Yes, so we've gotten those back and like this states, the next step is to appoint our four-member withdrawal committee that represents the town of Harper. One member from New Municipal Officers, one member from the general public, one member from the group filing the petition, and one member from the school board. So we will be meeting this Friday with the three select boards. And then on December second, we will be taking action to make the appointments for that committee.
So the school board director has to be part of it?
Yeah, so two of them are, two of them are pretty, pretty much set in stone. It'd be the the member of the, uh, the member of the school board, which is Chad.
Right.
That's the one we got. And the member of the group filing the petition, the only one we have is Becky. I would assume, correct?
Is she a member? Because she's not listed as a member anywhere.
She's the one that circulated the petition, she has to be a member, yeah.
She was, I don't know why they didn't write it down.
I don't know, she necessarily realizes that though.
What's that?
I said, I don't know that she necessarily realizes.
You want to, you want to reach out to Neil?
Neil Austin?
He's the chair of that committee, so he would know who's on the committee.
Are you saying you don't think she was officially on the committee?
She sat, she sat with him.
She sat at the table.
I know, but she's not on the website, she's not listed as a committee member anywhere I saw, but.
I, I think she has to be, she was the only one from Harper, but I think it's worth checking into.
I think she realizes it too.
I mean, she's the one that stood up here and made the presentation.
What time's that one, December second?
What time is that one? That's six, I think it was, didn't we just say it was December third?
Yeah, December third.
Six thirty to eight.
It was not in December second?
That's a select board meeting.
Right.
Oh, all right. These are so many meetings.
Yeah, it's going to be a busy. Verify.
Why can't you appoint them tonight? Oh, because you don't know exactly who you want on here yet.
Right.
I mean, technically we could, but I kind of want to meet with the other select boards, see what their feelings are.
Well, we figured, I guess based on that, we're thinking we would meet with them this Friday, we would appoint our, our group. Uh, that's the next select board meeting and then everybody, everybody kind of already knows about, that's why we're trying to circulate that date. So we can be ready. People are going to kind of already be aware that that date exists, so whoever the point is. Oh, no, they have to go with it. We can talk about it tonight as far as who we might want to, can we?
I mean, I would just wait until we talk to the other select boards.
Okay.
But it says a member of the general public, right, didn't it?
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, that's my email, I wonder what that was.
Don't know who you have, like, Dean.
What's that, general public?
Yeah. Should be Becky.
I've reached out to a few people, so I've got some options.
Do, okay.
I just want to, like I said, I want to talk to the select board and talk about their, see what.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, ad hoc comprehensive plan committee proposed rules of procedure.
Where'd that go? So Leanne, is this the email you were talking about that you is there?
So the date on it, it's like a box or a copy.
November eleventh? You're talking about the email?
No, it's a tab, the next page.
What date is it? October? Because I know it's been deferred.
October twenty-seven?
What, what date are you looking for?
The date the rules were sent to the town from Peggy.
Oh, I see approved on the bottom of page two, it says October eighth. Right. I think October eighth is when they did that.
She sent it on the twenty-seventh.
Sent the twenty-seventh?
Yeah, it says rules, adding for November fifth, agenda rules, ten twenty-two, twenty-five. Sent on October twenty-seventh.
Is this the same set of rules that I mentioned last time, that we shouldn't be choosing new officers?
That's what I thought, because it was deferred the last time, so I was kind of confused that it was on.
Well, I think it got deferred because there was, I was, I had Leanne looking into if we really need to have comprehensive plan or not, and if we're going to lose out on grants if we don't have one. So she, she got an email that from Maine Municipal Bond Bank that said, no, we're not, uh, comprehensive plan is not required to apply for a bond with the bond bank.
And I asked the attorney and he said they're not required for grants either.
And they're not required for grants.
Right.
So.
Well, I would just like to make the comment that I was working on this new section in Harper that in the ten years between the date of nineteen ninety and two thousand, between the nineteen ninety-two comprehensive plan and two thousand eight, those are the dates of the plans, but the data was ten years. And the data in those ten years had the town grow by thirty percent. And from the data from the eight, two thousand eight plan, which is the year two thousand, and currently, we've grown another thirty percent. So if you just want the town to you know, we give three acre lots with every two hundred and fifty feet of road fronted, we've had the same four hundred forty-nine and a half town maintaining roads, of miles of town maintaining roads since nineteen ninety.
That's not true.
What?
We've had new roads.
What? Well, according to the information that I've seen, we have forty-nine point five roads that are town maintained.
It hasn't been the same since.
Here's, here's Mike, here's Mike.
Well, let me just, let me just finish. The people that have looked at land management, the whole state domain, who want to actually maintain the rural beauty of the town at the state because we are a, a vacation land, this was looked into by many people and the ideal is not to have three acre, three acre, three acre on all those four nine and a half roads. You have to have some kind of planning and you have to look and see what's happening.
But you have to have growth zones.
What?
You'd have to have the growth zones with the comprehensive plan, correct? And the growth zones would be, we'd have to.
No, that's, that's
I think you do. And if you do.
No, only, only if you have it certified by the state.
Okay, that's what I'm going. I don't, I don't have a single problem if you guys want to do a comprehensive plan not certified by the state, but the minute you certify it by the state, then you have to follow the growth zone rules, which means you can build on a half acre lot. And once we start building on a half acre lot, so the population's going to go through the roof, and then we're going to start following all kinds of state laws, which we don't need to do. That's my, that's my concern.
But I also think that if you don't want the plan certified, then that should be a community decision and not your decision. I'm not saying that I want it certified, but I'm just thinking that we've had two plans that have been certified and we decertified it the one we have now because of the risk for the growth zones, but if the community, you know, I think that's something the community should have an opportunity to decide.
I don't disagree with that, but I think people, the community should also be informed of the the upside and the downside. I don't think we want to be built on half acre lots. Half acre lots, it means we're going to be stacked up. And once we reach, Leanne, what's the number, we have to have a fire department, a fire department and the police department, what is it, four thousand?
Building codes and all that, twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred people, we're going to start, I mean, we 2,500 people, we're gonna start, I mean, we, it's not good. Not good for the small town of Harper.
I'm just saying, you should look at all these factors. And then one thing I just learned recently was the, we had that guy come talk to us from, um, beginning with Habitat. In the wet, the wetlands map that is current now misses a few wetlands that we, has new wetlands on there that were not in the 2011, uh, shoreline zone plan. So I'm actually asking them to do an overlay so we can verify that, because maybe the planning board has to update the, the wet, I mean, the shoreline. I mean, there's so many little technical details about the town that I didn't just draw up on the wayside, that we might probably reasonable to plan.
So let me ask you this. I don't know the answer to this, and you may not either, but how do other towns don't have a comprehensive plan? Get those maps made or the wetlands, like, how, the state doesn't do it, the state's gonna do it automatically, aren't they?
Well, actually, I, we, we created our own wetlands map as best I can determine, because I've been reading the minutes for all the planning board, I've been back to 2010 now, because I scan everything. I gotta see what's in these minutes to know what we've done every year, so I can organize. So I'm finding out all pieces of information that generally nobody else knows, because nobody else has done this research. But, um, that I don't know. I will, I can go ask AFCOD how that map is developed.
Because that's concerning if what you just said is true, that...
It is. I think it is.
Because who is Peggy Matthews to determine a wetland?
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying...
I'm just using your name as an example.
I just was comparing the two maps and realized that there was a couple of big areas, one near Bearpon, and one between Canton Lake and Bearpon, over in that area, that weren't on the...
I just don't think that we should have, and don't, this is, don't take it the wrong way, just a regular citizen creating wetlands on a map.
AFCOD was involved, the state was involved, we have a shoreline ordinance.
Okay.
I don't know what the, you'd have to have a comprehensive plan to change a shoreline ordinance map, but...
I wouldn't think so.
I'm just saying, there's, what I'm just saying is a lot of details in town that nobody has really been looking at, and we've, we've been developing, and the ideas of how to monitor things were put forward in two different plans and then dropped. And the same ideas were first put forward after seeing what happened to the town's like in 1990. I'm just saying, maybe it's, I mean, you were very focused in taking care of the day-to-day functioning of the town, and this is like looking for the future and how, you know, how things are going.
Yeah, no, I mean, I don't, I agree, I just, I don't think the planning board needs any more, I mean, it takes three hours to get through one small application. If we start adding more rules, what's it gonna take, six hours? I mean, and not to mention, residents shouldn't have to...
It's done, that's all. Well...
We getting these things back?
As relatively new members of the planning board, that if everyone on the planning board really familiarized themselves with the ordinances, it wouldn't take three hours.
Right, for instance, we found...
People go there, they haven't even read the ordinance, people on the board.
And they don't even have the current version, but, I mean, we got the answer back from MNA that the height that we can measure on this building was or definition right in our shoreline zone ordinance. I mean, there's a lot, I mean, there's a lot involved and everything, but still, that's why this thing's took a while.
So, just so this doesn't pop up back in our agenda in two weeks, what do you guys want to do? Because I don't think it's fair. I, I don't disagree with Peggy, it should be the town's decision, but I don't want to waste the comprehensive plans committee, the ad hoc planning committee's time for the next eight months or whatever it is till the town meeting to vote on it. Right? Do we want them to keep, keep going status quo?
It's gonna take three years probably, I guess, and we would...
I get that, but if the town says they don't want it in, in June, then you just wasted eight months of your time.
It gets, I think the issue the town needs to vote on is whether it's certified.
Right, certified or not, not have one.
You want to have a plan, you want to know if this town really doing it. I don't think anybody wants that.
I get that, but if it's not certified by the state, how can you enforce it? It's not an ordinance.
How can you enforce it? I came here and said we should have a site plan ordinance, and we talked about it in the planning board. It gives you ideas of what, what things you can be working on as a community.
Yeah.
Thoughts besides me just talking?
Because the ordinances are what, can be enforced.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Comprehensive plan can.
But then, before we mention the complex board, should we have this ordinance? Should we deal with this issue? Yes or no? And by the way, there is a, um, a food ordinance that doesn't appear in, I can't find the date though. There is a, uh, the town did have a food ordinance one year.
Yes, we did.
And there's also a noise ordinance that I remember being passed, it's not in the ordinance, uh, guide that you get.
The food sovereignty ordinance is in the book.
I want to go back to what Lee said. Lee, comprehensive plan is an ordinance, and why isn't the ordinance committee writing it?
It's not an ordinance.
It's not. If the, if the comprehensive plan is an ordinance, the ordinance committee would write it. So it's not an ordinance. It's, it would be unenforceable.
So, he says that, he says that because the ordinance committee doesn't write a comprehensive plan, that it's not an ordinance.
No, it's not an ordinance.
Yeah, it's not. That's what I mean, it's not enforceable.
No, no.
It's God, I agree with that, but it would be an unenforceable God.
It has policies, and then it has implementation.
I don't think we didn't have policies.
Different parts of the town decided they're going to try to implement those plans. I mean...
I think, I think the key is, being on both committees, the key is that if the, working on the comprehensive plan raises the fact that there needs to be an ordinance, then the ordinance committee can work on it, which would make that important issue enforceable.
So you're saying that the comprehensive plan that's, would help inspire ordinances?
Yeah, right.
I think so. Or, or directions to take.
One of the things that is in the comprehensive plan.
Like, we, you brought back the recreation committee, I mean, because that's a, that's a whole section of the comprehensive plan. I mean, for instance, it wasn't addressed in the 2008 plan, but the 1992 plan, there was a whole list of general recommendations on what kinds of facilities a town should have at what level of population. And I showed that to, um, Becky, and she was very interested to see that, to know like, you know, when do you have to have a ball, when should you have a ball field, and when should you offer something in your town, or have a picnic area or something like that. I mean, there's a lot of little details of all the different parts that go into comprehensive plan that involve all these areas in your community, that's all.
It's supposed to prevent rural development.
True, yes. Land use is the major, the major reason.
How does it do that any differently than the planning board? I, I don't understand how that, the comprehensive plan does that any differently than the planning board restricts development.
Well, it is said, it said if you get to the point of having a zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance must be, uh, uh, agreed with the comprehensive plan.
That's what I'm saying. Just once you have the comprehensive plan, you get, there's a lot more that goes with it.
It says the decision to write or update a comprehensive plan is initiated and eventually adopted by a local government legislative body such as city council, town meeting, or county board. So it sounds like you guys can decide whether or not to...
I think we're gonna, much I hate to say it, table this. Till the next meeting, I'll reach out to MNA and find out who's really got the right to make this decision.
Should we keep going?
Yes.
Elected officials decide to undertake the plan and give it legal effect through adoption. It's up to you guys whether to...
Yeah, I just want to, I'll get it from MNA. I don't disagree with you.
To approve it, yes.
Okay.
And don't, don't take this wrong, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I just think there's a lot more guidelines and policies and laws that we'll have to follow with a state-certified comprehensive plan.
I, I understand.
And I don't think we're the size town that we want to be following that, the laws.
I don't have a lot to say on it, because I don't understand why the plan, a planning board can't serve as essentially what a comprehensive plan does, other than expressing vision of future. I guess, is that the difference?
Well, and that is why it was assigned to the planning board.
Right.
Well, the responsibility, nothing about that, but the responsibility.
Make sure it happens, yeah.
Right. That, that, which the previous board could not seem to understand.
And I have to say that in my years on the planning board, the planning board has functioned primarily to deal with applications that come in and occasional complaints that come in. But some, you know, to plan sometimes looks beyond that, which is where the comprehensive plan part comes in. And when I was chair, that's why I moved towards doing something about cleaning the closet, was mentioned for a long time, but now we're getting towards the point, you know, sometimes doing your job is more than just doing that growth at the minimum, it's seeing where the whole territory is.
The planning boards are police and the, the planning board, they police the ordinances, kind, well, not really, but you know what I mean?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, well, that's, that's heading out.
Bearpon Improvement Association.
I don't know why that keeps coming up, but they don't show up, so...
Right, Ben.
He was gonna come tonight, did I tell you? You forgot about it. All right. Recreation Committee Events. Reese Makin, November 30th, Parents Day Out Event. December 20th or 21st.
I'm assuming you checked the dates, Leanne, make sure they're good for...
Yep. They didn't get back to me which they wanted, the 20th or the 21st.
Does either day matter on the calendar?
Nope.
Hold on, yeah. I'll make a motion to let the rec committee use, I'm assuming it's the town hall they want to use, right?
Yep.
To use the town hall on the 30th of November and either the 20th or the 21st of December.
Second.
Home Taylor? Okay. New business.
I want to talk about that one that we added first. I don't even see Bim here, so he was supposed to be here, but...
Yeah, go ahead.
So, Bim contacted me today, or actually contacted me a couple of weeks ago and again today, but he was basically, I don't know what's said basically, not forced, but he, he was asked if he could plow pine shores. I guess the previous guy that plows is not doing it. Um, and he asked if the select board would allow him to purchase sand and salt. I think he said it was gonna be 60 yards of sand and I don't know how many tons of salt, and he was just gonna put it in the salt shed. Sumner used to do this.
Used to do what?
They used to have their sand and salt mixed together, like in their...
Your building, you mean?
Nope, in theirs, because Sumner, I guess, does part of Woodstock, so Woodstock would reimburse him, so I think. What's your thoughts? He said he gave us the receipts.
Give us the receipt?
So that he, that he actually purchased the sand and salt. And I can see his point, he's plowing Thompson Lane, which is pine shores.
I think Manion used to plow down Manion. He plowed, perhaps.
It's kind of pointless for him to drive all the way back to wherever he wants to.
Stockpile it. Peggy?
Is there some way for the future to have some kind of contract period, uh, plan between pine shores and the town, so the town can do their area, like, you know, extra contract or something?
I, I thought of that, I just think that opens a door. I think, I think that would, I think that would open a door for every private road in town if he did that.
Well, we, we don't have to accept it.
I can't remember what.
You can't pick and choose private roads, you're gonna accept it, not accept it. It is. But I feel like you're plowing the road you live on.
Right, but I mean, you can choose based on the fact that it's like passable and not passable, right? Like, it's not big enough for this, the size of this street.
I just, I don't think you can do that. That's just asking for trouble.
I think it's gonna be a blurry line, because he has other places he plows and sand, and people are gonna accuse...
Well, that's my concern, is that...
Remember, we even remember we had a camera up there at one time, because there's so many accusations about people using sand on other
towns or roads or...
One times was packing and air loading.
It's just, if he, if he doesn't do it, does he use his bucket loader up there?
Yeah, between him and David.
So if he does that, he's gonna have to drive his bucket loader somewhere else to load the sand, so... I just don't know how else to, how else to do it.
Is it, is it our problem? It's a private road.
Doesn't the salt check get maxed out at the beginning of the year, doesn't it still?
No, this is actually, well, I don't know what it is this week, I haven't been up there this week, but last week when I was up there, there was still a little coal patching there.
There's still filling it.
Plenty of room.
There's still filling it.
Yeah.
I'm a little bit torn.
I mean, I can see both sides, and that was my, my first comment to him was, this shouldn't be a problem, but it's definitely gonna be a problem.
I guess, I think that's exactly right. It, it only opens up the door to...
Because you're right, there's no way to monitor it. But, that being said, even if we say no, he's still gonna get accused of it, because he's down there anyways.
Right.
So, why not take the money?
Take the money?
Sorry, why not let him do it?
Are you getting paid for that?
Why not take the money, the receipts to prove that he did it, if he's gonna get accused of it anyways?
I know that he had something in the garage of his own. And our insurance company, he said, no, that cannot be there.
I understand that, that makes sense, but, I mean, sand and salt is sand and salt.
Yep.
I see he has a pile of sand and salt in his driveway in his garage right now, but...
Instead of clean environment, to be in the shade.
That's why we have this, that's why there's a rule.
I'll have to ask Pam how that went with Manion, he plowed. If the town paid him or if pine shores...
It's always when pine shores paid separately.
I guess, fine.
But he must have used...
That's what I'm saying.
I don't know if he used the town sand or what.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, would you rather do it that way? Would you rather say...
Or if they had their own stockpile over there somewhere.
Because I think he charged them $1,000 for sand and salt for the winter. Would you rather see if he'd rather just give us a check for $1,000? I don't know how he would.
I guess, my, my, my thought is that instinctively, we have the receipts, it's legit, it's okay, it seems fine, no big deal, people are gonna accuse him either way, but does it, does it open the door for us giving favor to them to that when, while he is the road commissioner? Randy Yaman plows my road, how come he can't put the sand in there? You know, that's, that's the, that's the com, internal conflict that I'm kind of dwelling with. Like, why can't anybody else use it for whatever they want to do? Then, I'm not on anybody's side with this one, but... Pine shores.
Problem is, I don't know.
Right, somebody would have to have a piece of equipment there.
I don't think it's our issue, it's a private road, it's a private contractor, but...
We'll give a plant well back in the salt shed, cover it.
I wish you'd see that, I mean, he said he'd be here, I say we just, we'll just, no action?
Yeah, I guess.
He's not here to speak on behalf, then.
Yeah, that would be good.
It is legal to have a contract with the private roads sections.
I'd say we just table it. If he wants to show up on the second, we'll talk to him again.
Yeah, I, I know he's got thick skin and he's not concerned about the ridicule as long as he adds the receipts, but. Wow. Yep, talk about it later.
Got to find out more info on it, what they did years ago.
See what, see what Pam did.
Yeah, Alaska. I know Dave Bullen was in on it somehow.
I do know Pine Shores struggled like hell to find anywhere to plow their roads, because they were searching pretty hard.
Dave wanted to do it. Well, he moved out. Yeah, he moved out. Okay. Road complaint, Rickers Hill Road Culvert.
So, I talked to Ben about this today.
Yeah.
It's not the main driveway entrance, it's the upper one. And he said all the culvert needs to do is be cleaned out. It's a culvert on Rickers Hill. So, he's, he was in his road commissioner's report, he's gonna be cleaning that culvert out.
That's the one?
Yeah.
Looks like it's okay, they don't have edges there.
That's the top on the side.
Right. But it's fine.
So, I'll keep, I'll, I'll keep following up with him, find out when he fixes it or cleans it out, I mean. The other question I had, I asked him and he couldn't really give me a straight answer, maybe you can, Cap, nearly Anne. We, the, say you, say you've got a piece of property and you've got three driveway entrances. Is the town responsible to maintain all three of those culverts?
To put one in, it's supposed to be at the entrance to your home.
Correct, that's what I was wondering.
The, the first one, the homeowner pays for the culvert, we install it.
Right.
Then we maintain it from there on.
But, just the main entrance, right? Not.
They'll look at the ordinance.
Peggy?
But if they go over going to the same road, if you clean one culvert, need the other to.
Well, cleaning is one thing, but replacing them after the initial, we are obviously gonna clean them, because that's gonna help save our rooms.
Right.
But, I mean, someone can go put eight different driveway entrances in, do we maintain all, do we change, are we responsible for all of them? Yeah, here's the law.
Are they in the, uh, right away?
Are they in the right of way?
Because thirty, thirty feet from the central line of the road.
Yeah, they would have to be, they're in the ditch.
So, if they're in the right of way, then it's town property to be taken care of.
I don't know about that.
That's why.
Just like when you have, the road get paved and they have to pay over there for all the culverts that.
That's different.
Me?
Well, another thought on that is that if, if, uh, if the town is only responsible for the one that leads to your driveway to your home and not probably the other culverts, what happens when those other culverts, uh, lack maintenance and. Or, or get plugged or something like that? What's gonna happen? The water's gonna dump that culvert, it's gonna go out and damage the town's road, which is a considerable expense.
I, I'd like to think that eight culverts on one property is a little better.
Well, I was being.
That's exactly.
Right.
It says a favorable recommendation in writing by the town road commissioner for all proposed entrances onto a a town road. The owner was responsible for the purchase cost of any new culverts, which must meet the approved all of the selectmen.
So, if we had to, if we had to replace this culvert in question, the property owner would have to buy new culvert, is that what you're saying?
No.
The other way around.
The other way around. They buy it the first time, the town buys it the second. And that goes for every culvert on the property.
And there are the second, third, and every other one. All the rest.
So, don't say anything, but it has to be the driveway going in the entrance of the house. Yep.
It's in the building lot standards, though.
Okay, well, either way, he's gonna clean that out. It was full of rocks and stuff, so.
There could water still able to go through it. Okay, revised list of events for two hundred and fifty celebration.
I didn't see the first one, so. I probably have, but I just don't remember it. That was one of the meetings I was going on.
My only question is, did they change the plan for their, yeah.
For the parade?
Yeah.
I doubt it.
She added a marching band.
She is pretty set on Tucker Road. Yeah.
That's so brilliant, guys.
So.
I tried to get it started from Journey Hill Road down through.
Instead of trying, instead of, I'm gonna use a word from my employer, instead of trying, let's make her. Because try never happens, we make her, James and Bruton, and that will happen.
Honestly, I mean, why don't we come down to the, I heard that the recreation committee, you know, meeting the night we were talking about, they said that children on bicycles will be disallowed because of the ill.
Oh, anything, that's a. Someone got hurt once in the past.
You know?
Yeah, I, I think we need to tell her that.
I mentioned it to her about coming, starting in the Journey Hill Road, coming down, down through the center of town, you know what the answer was? You wanna run the show?
Yep. Tell her it won't be no show. That's a, that's a hazard, I don't, I'm not in favor of that at all.
Nobody.
So, can we have her added to the next agenda to be here and explain to us what her reasoning is? Is it two-way fair?
Probably.
Yeah. That's always bad. I think.
Can't we make a motion to say that that can't happen?
I want to hear her explanation first. Maybe she knows a good reason for it.
Tucker Road, you can't even get them bicycles go down?
Well, that's what I know, but I don't know.
I told her, I hope his antique cars have got good brakes.
Well, you know, the town owns the old hearse, which is being stored in the museum. I think there's plans for her to have a horse team pull that in the parade, which someone thought might be dangerous too.
Well, I, I also heard someone talking to her about that here a little while ago and says, kind of something was wrong with it.
It's an old antique.
Something was actually wrong with it and they didn't know if it would be safe to
Right.
pull.
I remember Tom Adams pulling it, but I, I remember it as a single horse team.
Yeah, I think she needs to be here.
Maybe she took it off, I don't know.
Yeah, it would be.
But, you know, those things have to be.
They'd even volunteer to lay in it. That'd be funny.
It'd be funny, go down Tucker Road, hundred miles and.
Oh, Jesus. Okay, Canton Highway, the Slumerville Trail, you must permit.
I'll make a motion to allow them to use the the trail wherever Ben said.
Yep.
I second that motion.
When you asked, there was always something about how good trees are that they could cut, and we always said zero.
There's no trees down there right now, they were waxed out the last few.
We all have to sign this.
Um, I don't know, what's it have there?
Just says landowner signature.
Yeah, I would. At least the majority.
Yeah, the audience committee works list amendments.
So, did you guys see that email I sent you last week? That's the yes or no question.
I got a lot of emails.
So, the, the ordinance committee, um, looking for a more
Oh, yeah.
detailed, and one of the things that is on the, the list we, well, one of the lists we gave them, I think it was before you were elected, was the tax required property. Instead of my suggestion, instead of rewriting this ordinance every time the state changes the law, why don't we just write the ordinance, uh, pursuant to main state law?
Right.
And that'll take care of that forever.
Yep.
And it'll make Leanne's life a lot easier, too.
Yeah, I suggested that last year, but.
Sounds good to me.
So, that's one thing. Let me get to that email and see if I can figure out what the rest was. Yes?
Are you gonna add the, uh, comprehensive plan committee to the list of committees? Remember you mentioned wanting to have a comprehensive plan committee ordinance? But the town had ordinances for all the different committees, got rid of them and put them all in a little paragraph underneath the whole list of committees in the administrative ordinance part two, the part that refers to the amendment about the.
So, I don't wanna, I don't wanna say anything about that until we figure out what's going on. Because then we open another door, then we're gonna figure out how to get rid of it again.
Okay, it's only the eighteen months that have been working on this, okay?
All right, where is it?
I think. Been saying this for a few years, I think a, a review of all the ordinances needs to happen before we adopt any more. Because they don't coincide with each other.
Oh, that's, I have another question.
Some we go by, some we don't.
Can the planning board review the, um, building lots ordinance to make suggestions as to make it compliant with the recent state laws? Or do you need to send that to the ordinance committee?
What, what's that again? I was.
Can the planning board review the building lot standards ordinance to let, inform the select board what changes would make it compliant with the new state law relating, relating to that, you know, the updating of LD two oh oh three about how many buildings you can put on each building lot. Wrap up, instead of sending it to the ordinance committee, because we're gonna be looking at that specifically to make recommendations.
Can't the planning board make the recommendation to the ordinance committee?
I'm just gonna say that.
I don't think so.
It's not directing yet, it's just a recommendation.
Well, you have, you, you are assigning the ordinance committee what ordinances it's gonna work on.
Well, if you, okay, so if you wanna make the recommendation to us, we can make the recommendation. Right, gotcha, I see what you're saying.
But it's not me doing the whole ordinance, it's just a few minor change, I mean.
Yeah.
Because it was pretty muddled when they first just decided how to do that.
Gotcha.
So, the other, the other, um, items, um, were the administrative ordinance part two.
Right.
I didn't see anything that needs to be addressed in that. Did you guys have a chance to look at it?
I thought that was, the only thing I recall from that was that we were talking about the comprehensive plan, I thought that was part of that.
Yeah. And I think what we got from the previous board, and you might have even been on it, and, uh, was something about the wording done around work. But we don't know what.
No, I think that, I looked at, that's fine, it was, the only issue with it last time was the, it was changed from, or looking to change it from, um, elected to appointed.
Right.
So, that, the way it's written now is.
Were they also trying to add the ability at the discretion of the select board or something like that? I can't remember what that was.
Yes, I believe so.
Something like that.
Pam?
On the original list for the ordinance committee, there was language about ad hoc committees, because there was arguments about what their rules were, whether they follow the rules of the other committees or not.
Was, was that the list that was never voted on, so it's not really legal?
No, this was approved by you and Kathy this morning.
Yeah, but I think that I read in the minutes from that meeting that come to find out, the, the select board never voted on that.
You mean when you were in office?
Yeah, me and Kathy, that's what you mean.
It was your first meeting.
Yeah, well, I was second, but I don't think we ever voted on it, so I don't think it was ever.
You didn't vote it on at the next meeting?
I don't believe so, I, I'd have to go back and look at the minutes, but I, I, I found it, during the select board meeting on six seventeen, the select board gave a work list to the ordinance committee. On that work list was the task of writing a site review plan. The select board never voted on this work, thus making the work list not valid.
Look at the next meeting.
Why we're confused. We just didn't know where these are listed.
You get the next meeting?
I'd have to go back.
Because that's what I sent them.
So, give me a minute, I'll get to that in a minute, but the next item I had was, um, Article four in the planning board ordinance was I believe to do with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, you approved the ordinance.
It was voted at town meeting to keep it in the planning board's.
Approved.
Yep, on, uh, July first.
What was it?
Leanne just found it. July first.
Yeah, I'm looking for something else. Planning board ordinance. Article four. So, Article four of the planning board ordinance, the board shall prepare comprehensive plans defined by MRSA.
Statute of legislation.
Yeah. So, but that was repealed, that's email I sent you, that was repealed, um, so I think that doesn't.
Not the, that part of the ordinance wasn't repealed, the.
No, the state law was repealed.
No, but.
It's not state law anymore that says that the comprehensive plan has to be prepared by the planning board? Or, sorry, it's not state law that says comprehensive plan has to be prepared.
Generally, when state laws, when the jurisdiction referred to the, um, state planning office that got dissolved and its duties were put into the Department of Agriculture Conservation and Farming or something like that, Forestry. So, when that happens, the jurisdiction changes of the actual number of the, of the ordinance, of the, um, statute changes, but that generally you don't, it doesn't wipe out your ordinance. It's still according to the rules that are under the Department of Agriculture, Forestry and Agriculture Conservation.
But what I'm saying is, the state law, MRSA thirty, section forty six ninety one, was repealed. So, but you, it, what that said was that everyone has to have a comprehensive plan.
Okay, all right, I see what you're saying.
You follow me?
Yeah.
So, I don't think we need to have that, that needs to be struck from the ordinance. Because right now, that's not law. So.
So, your general, um, your general opinion is the concept of planning for the town of Hartford should not exist in any of our, our ordinances or procedures of any committee, so that it gets lapsed by the wayside like it has.
No, that's not my, no, that's not my opinion.
Okay.
My opinion is if it's telling, if it's in an ordinance, it's saying that you have to do it because of state law, that means it's not state law.
Okay, then just, just put a period out, compare the comprehensive plan, and don't say it's according to the statute.
Correct, but that leads me to my next point that I made way back. I don't think it should be in the planning board ordinance, or, planning board ordinance period, because they have enough work to do.
That is one concept, but who, what other organization has the, well, we hope, some history of dealing with land use and what's involved in land use? I mean, that's why comes, that's why things are kind of ordinal under the content area that you've had some responsibility and knowledge of that, that's all.
And the, the two sweet points that I understood about comprehensive plans are land use and natural resources. And that the natural resources of Parker definitely dictate a lot of the land use because of the lakes and streams, you know, the San Fernando stuff.
I do.
And it's the planning board that deals with that.
That, which is why the state statutes refer to the select board or a planning board if you have a planning board, because it's already recognized. And if you start, I'll give you, I'll go to Senator, he's found it again recently, the, the link to all the towns that have plant, have comprehensive plans in the state domain, it tells you whether they were approved, and if you look at most of them, they will say they were done by the planning board or a committee from the planning board. I'm just telling you that's how things generally are functioning.
In many towns, the planning board takes care of all of the ordinances.
I, uh, I actually looked for that list today and I couldn't find it. I found one, but it wasn't, wasn't alphabetical order, it was just all jumbled up on the State website. Um, because I saw that Sumner had one, but I don't remember Sumner having approved.
They weren't, yeah, they're not all approved, now your approved, approved plan was never approved. I was looking at a few of them just the other day because I was trying to compare what other towns have done about the historical stuff compared to what I've learned about historical stuff. You know, I'm just trying to figure out how can people solve these problems.
Lenny?
I found the minutes that were approved for the July first.
Yeah, Leanne already found them.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
So, you know what it says?
Yeah.
Well, it's quite different from what we're talking about. The ordinance committee work list official approved, official approval includes site review ordinance, administrative ordinance amendments, administrative part two, including all that not community certification and road commissioner language. Say, if we don't know what, we need a very clear list in order to function. If that's not specific enough to know what we're supposed to do. But it is there, it was approved, uh...
We should have the list.
There's a really big motion Kathy said in the middle of the break. But that doesn't tell us what we want. You can't know what we need.
Well, administrative ordinance part one is totally out of, does not comply with state law, especially the recrossed out.
Yeah.
So, let me ask you a question. If you want me to tell you what I want, why don't I just write it?
Uh, no, no.
I'm serious.
Well, what is it you want us to make it up? No, she asked you for more guidance as to what is the issue that you want to create? What is the difference that you're trying to enact by rewriting parts of it? Like when you're talking about the code enforcement, the code enforcement office, it's code enforcement?
No.
Road commissioner. Do you, do you dislike what's there now? Because they tried to create, change it at the, uh, town meeting and it didn't, didn't get changed? So, what is it about the way it's written now is, do you think needs to be changed? What about it needs to be changed? Something about the nature of the way it's expressed?
I, I read, to tell you the truth, I read through it last week when I got the list of questions from the ordinance committee, and I don't recall, I don't see anything in there that it would have made me want to change it.
Do you feel the same here? And do you, Kathy? Because you're, you're the one who's going all this...
Well, I would have to read it again to remember.
Because think about road commissioner as a position and not a person.
Right.
What's there is very general. And I think there was a thought, you know, like it, I can't remember the language.
Is that, we need the state ordinance, the state legislation on it to tell us what?
Well, that's what was voted down by the town.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm looking at it right now, it's three sentences. I, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with it.
Then we don't need to work on that.
I mean, it's not my, it's not just my decision though, I'm waiting for some input over here. I mean, I sent the email last week to be thinking about this, here I am.
Are that piece script for your next meeting?
I would agree.
You just need to know what you want. What, what is it about, is it language about the select board? Does the road commissioner need more, you know, oversight? If you like it being that way, you think future road commissioner could function well under that? That's all I'm thinking of. If you think about the position and not the person.
What, he'd have more duties?
No, no. I don't know, I'm just saying, is it too generic for the position as opposed to the person? No, no, I don't think that's what he's doing.
I don't either. I like the way it is being elected.
Yes, no, no, oh, no, that's not part of the... That's not it, no, the duties, two duties and...
I need more time to look at it.
And to move, the road commissioner is responsible? Or is the road commissioner, you know, equal to the select board and the town?
I'm gonna read it real quick. The road commissioner shall be elected by the town, by town meeting and is responsible for all matters regarding town roads, ways and bridges.
I'm hard to argue with that.
I know, that's what I'm saying, but we're still talking about it, aren't we?
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Alright, that's it. And responsible for the road budget.
No, it doesn't say that.
I know, it doesn't say anything about the budget. This is why...
Well, he's gotta make sure he don't go over the budget.
He's not responsible.
The selectmen are...
Yeah, the selectmen and the budget committee are responsible for.
Shouldn't say that, though?
No, why?
Because that's, that's where some of the arguments came from.
Well, it shouldn't need to say that because it's, it's, you have to...
Right.
Right now...
So, back to the email.
So, we don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, well...
So, I guess that leads us to the final question, the site review plan ordinance, which I think was on the work list that we talked about, right? I, at that time, I was under the impression that we had one, which we don't. I read a few this week, one being Sumner and one being, I don't remember the other one, I read where it was.
We, we took, we pulled out Sumner's, which is very complex, and we pulled out, I think, um, West Harris, which is a very simple plan we tend to build. We pulled out Keybridge, which is somewhere in between. And I think those were the three we were looking at so we don't reinvent the wheel. You know what I'm saying?
Okay.
I think that anybody who's going to write a site plan review ordinance needs to read the site plan review handbook, which is available online, just Google it there and stay... I know, I gave a plan, I gave a, the, the, yeah, ordinance committee has copies, but I think you need to understand all the components that's trying to protect the, the town from desecration by reckless building just because you have presented a, uh, you've got a building permit.
Right.
There's a lot of components to it, that's why some of them seem so detailed. Looking, it's, it's similar to like a subdivision ordinance in terms of it just looks at all those different factors, like the signage and the rainwater runoff and the, how much of permeable surface and, and, uh, you know, noise pollution, other kinds of pollution.
Right.
So, that's, so then it falls to the planning board to see if the plan that's projected to us meets all these qualifications so that it will be aesthetic for the town on some level. And, you know, amenable to the, the preferences of the town residents.
I guess, I remember reading, I remember reading all of this now, and before I was like, what the hell are you talking about?
So...
What is the question?
The questions are...
No, but I mean, no, but what is the question?
This is why we don't have a put to stand on about this.
You, you, you very, I thought everything you wrote was pretty thorough.
I wrote it to YouTube and to Leanne.
Okay, I got you now.
These guys are gonna see it.
Ah, okay, that, that's the part I was missing.
So... So, you're right, but, but I don't, I don't want to get into that here, it's not worth it. I knew that, I, you, you, you said exactly what I suspected, where this came from. This all stemmed from the guy that came here and wanted to do the explosive stuff.
No, it didn't come from that, I've been thinking about this for a long time.
Actually, it was mentioned in nineteen ninety-two and two thousand eight comprehensive plans.
Yes.
And she's been talking about this since I can remember.
Yeah, no, no, I just was giving you as an example why we don't have a link to stand on because you do not have a site plan review ordinance. And do you want to wait for more things to come down the pipe before you decide to do something? Prevention, you know, most people like to be prevented, some of the stuff.
No, I, I don't, but this goes back to what I said. This goes back to what I said earlier.
What?
This is just another three-hour permit.
Talk.
Me with a, with a citizen, with a planning board.
But the planning board is not obligated to rush.
Yes, that, that was planning board, what about that now?
I, I, I'm not, okay, yeah, thoughts? I'm digging a hole here.
I still don't know what the question is.
They want a work list.
We can give them a work list, we can't give it to them right now.
A work list for yous group.
Well, yeah, I mean, if, if that, if, if the last twenty minutes was about you want a work list, we, we...
Huh?
They have one.
Yeah, but they could, I would say, and now we're changing that. Because the road commissioner language is on there and we're saying, no, we're not gonna do that.
I think, I think the bottom line is it makes sense for us to have an input on what you're working on.
Yes.
And yes, I agree with that, but I'm not prepared to give you any instructions.
But if we need...
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's like something we can work on.
Well, I think we can tackle one ordinance at a time perhaps, and right now I, I read, I read what you said, but I, I, I thought you sent all that to Lenny.
No.
That was my misunderstanding, so I read through that and I assumed that I was seeing, I went to Lenny, I just read it like, yeah, I like, whatever you said, that's perfect, but...
So, to the honor secretary.
I'll, I'll review it again.
The only thing, Jaleen and I were looking at the new solar ordinance, and it does mention site plan review ordinance in there.
Yeah.
Can you give them leeway to do that?
Can we stop them from putting these stupid solar fields in this town? I don't want to see that at all.
No, we got solar.
Yeah, we do.
But that's for a large, large solar, solar... You don't want to see solar panels in people's houses, is that what you're saying?
I don't want them to be in anybody's field.
Field.
Oh, fields, we're going with the solar ordinance.
Yeah, I guess that better, huh?
Least understanding is that we don't have the right electrical connectivity, so nobody's gonna come around and do a, a big...
People have been calling.
Yeah, Dave.
Where does it say that? I see it, I see it says, um, applicability for CEO review or planning board site review.
Does it just say site review? It doesn't say site review ordinance?
No, well, I haven't seen it yet, but, I mean, it doesn't say, I just skim it.
We, we did get a plan, we did get it passed at a select board meeting that until such time as we have a site plan review ordinance, if a non-residential or commercial application comes to the CEO, that we, the, the planning board's gonna look at it first. So, we will actually use the procedure of a site plan review before the CEO gets something so we can have some input to the bad ordinance to follow. That was passed a year ago in June, I think.
Someone's been not like China, we can't, you can't do anything
Really?
without going through a, hiring an engineer and a consultant and...
Well, that's what I was, I've talked to a few people over the past couple of weeks though, their thoughts on this, and that's what people are worried about. So, if you start, if you do a site plan ordinance or a site, whatever it's called, you just make it...
One of the things we want to avoid writing a site plan review ordinance is not requiring excessive amounts of engineering, et cetera, et cetera.
I'm speaking more than, well, aesthetics, I don't know, I'm not thinking about that kind of thing.
I don't know, but it's, it's a tough one because what you want be different one to what they want. So, it's, it's gonna be voted on in the end of the town, but let's table it, think about it, talk to some people, get some thoughts.
No.
Well, you say that, but we did a few years ago, when we did the administrative ordinance part two, we started writing freaking ordinances for every damn committee in town.
Every single committee already had ordinance.
Did they?
Every committee...
Admin, administrative ordinance part one didn't have it, didn't have it.
Because part one was only about ethics and, um, behavior for municipal offices and the work.
So...
You read to it, the administrative ordinance part one was adopted because we had an ethics problem at the time, and it was, it was a, basically a reactionary document to prevent that from being a problem in the future.
I don't know, I just think, my theory on why you feel if anything broke, don't fix it. But let's move on before I dig myself a...
Okay. Tax foreclosures sale versus choice, choice of realtor.
So, I think November twenty-sixth, it will be ninety days since I sent the letters to the two prior owners of the foreclosed properties.
It's more than one?
Two.
It's one of them that were after it.
So, how do you want to choose a realtor? They have to be sold by a realtor. Do you want to put it out to bid, do you want to choose a random?
So, what have they been on, like, lowest commission rate? How, I don't, I don't explain this process, how have they bid?
Probably, probably they have different commission, I think the law changed though.
Did you bid for something before?
The law changed, it has to be sold through a realtor.
Yeah.
It has to be sold through a realtor, no matter what...
Yes. So, I, I mean, if that's all it is, I think you, I don't know any realtors.
I know all kinds of them.
But you can't be related.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about related, I go, I know a bunch of them, but I don't know how you do this. I don't know how you select one without choosing favoritism or you just...
Being a realtor's a realtor, but...
Have we worked with any before? Guys, we're trying to, we're, we're trying to talk here.
I don't think we've ever used one.
No? It doesn't happen to me, I mean, I just want to see how you put out a realtor out to bid.
I know, the town of Buckfield, I think I took a picture, they had a proposal for realtors.
Really?
You know, official...
Maybe I can reach out to them and find out.
Well, I think this is gonna happen, right, it has to happen soon, right?
Um, what's the time limit? After ninety-day period? I don't know if they have that law or not.
The first one doesn't work.
Huh?
This annoying realtor, so I mean...
No, I know, I just...
It's built in Jackson.
Right, I've got realtors in my business network, I know all kinds of people, so I guess...
I don't have the timeline working out, but...
But you said that Buckfield had a, a document, I can at least reach out to them.
Yeah, I saw him as, advertised on Facebook, a proposal for realtors.
Alright, and will this, will choose one next meeting?
Choose one?
I, yeah, I don't see why, I don't, I don't want to put that, I don't know how you bid on them.
Well, I guess that's what...
What if someone comes in with over six percent? I need to choose them.
Right, I don't know.
I say we just...
Because they do get different rates.
Yes.
That's why I was wondering if, what, what do we care what they get anyways?
But we don't, because we're getting, we're getting reimbursed whatever costs us.
It's gonna have to be an as is, which, oh, we're gonna give them a quick clean deed.
I mean, I don't know any realtors, you know a realtor right now, if you know a realtor right now, go for it.
Yeah. I'll make some contacts tomorrow.
Okay, number six, bulky waste rules.
Yeah, um, I didn't bring the schedule for twenty twenty-sixth, but the only thing that changed was Buck will be on a Monday instead of a Thursday. I usually have, I usually hand these out at the same time as the curbside schedule, so do you want to keep everything the same?
What, is this the spring thing?
Yeah. I just got to change.
What, what will be on a Monday, last week, last time it took four weeks.
You think it's gonna take one day?
They're gonna start, they're gonna start.
Okay.
I mean, the, last year we changed it to only one... I mean, the, last year we changed it to only one truckload, or was it last year or the year before?
Didn't last year.
So, is it, what, when? One of my ideas I presented to the solid waste committee was to look into possibly doing bulky waste right down here. And I, I don't know if you're gonna present that to us tomorrow, Lee? Lee?
Yeah.
Did you have your findings on the bulky waste, with solid waste committee?
Um, not specifically the bulky.
Okay, so, one of the ideas I had was, one of the complaints Archie had was they're picking up and people putting more trash out the next day. So, one of my ideas was why can't we set up Archie's right here in the, in the railroad bed, in that, where we used to have a salt sand pile? And pick a weekend, maybe three weekends, I don't care, get us the list of residences in the town, and I'll volunteer my time, check people's names off as they drop stuff off, and do it that way. It'll be easier for Archie's, we'll, we'll make it so a double, triple, whatever times people putting stuff out.
My comment to that is if they would have done it efficiently the first time last year, that wouldn't have had that, wouldn't, we wouldn't have to take it to this step, right? Like, it took them three weeks, so of course people kept putting stuff out, because people kept thinking they're gonna keep coming back.
So, let's look at it this way. It might save the town money on that.
All right, I believe that's where you were going with that, so.
And people aren't putting it out in the pouring rain.
Right.
Soaking it down.
Right.
They're bringing it, they're loading their truck and they're bringing it right to us.
If they get an old mattress or two, they're not gonna keep them inside. I wouldn't keep them inside all summer, because they don't have any.
Well, that was my other thing, I know, I know that people are going to not be thrilled about the fact that they had the ability to put it out by the road and now they have to haul it somewhere.
So.
I was trying to say it nicely, Lee.
So let me say this, this is, I knew this was coming. Are we the only ones in the, in the country that has someone come to our house to pick up our trash?
Yeah.
So.
I've always had trash pickup, wherever I live.
Okay, Buckfield doesn't, they manage, Summit doesn't, they manage, Turner doesn't, they manage.
They have a transfer station.
But they bring it there, that's what I'm saying, we'd have, we'd have a temporary transfer station for bulky waste.
But they also have somebody that will, that can hire to come and pick up the trash.
I'm not saying that we wouldn't either, I mean, that might be an option. I guarantee if you call, I'm not gonna mention names, but someone in town, they would come and pick your stuff up for you.
How are you gonna monitor that?
Well, good question, but.
So would you, you would, you would have to pay that person?
Hell, yeah.
Probably.
Yeah.
But, I mean, they do them, there's someone in Buckfield that doesn't, and they pay him five bucks.
Five bucks?
For regular trash.
For regular trash, yeah, but I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just spitballing, and you're just.
The more you make it difficult for people to disclose the things they don't mind in their property, the more you're gonna find these things littering the property, and I think there are some properties in town. Yep, show that already, that's what's gonna happen, you go.
On top, on top of that, you're gonna see it all there.
Like, all I can say is that we wouldn't be having this conversation if it wasn't such a show last year. The only, there's two ways to look at it, we can either entertain ideas like whatever you're suggesting, or Archie's gets a lot more efficient with their operations and we give, I mean, see, let's see what, we could just, I mean, do we have to make a decision on this anytime soon?
Uh, not really, but I feel like you're kidding yourself if you think that we only just started talking about this after last year's, um,
Exactly.
Because we can talk about this for the longest time.
You, you're talking about bulky waste specifically?
Oh, we brought that up before last year's problem.
Oh, man.
We should have, we should have, number one, we cut that to one, then by the finish happened, that cut it down, quite a bit, because.
I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just showing ideas out there.
Right.
So.
I'm not disagreeing with anything.
And I, and I, the, I'm, I'm doing, I'm on a roll, like, I'm on a roll, but the idea, the idea that people don't have trucks, I don't want to hear it, because it happens all across the U S, people will go to transfer stations, so that's not an excuse. There's always a way to do it. But, I understand it, that's me, I don't understand the.
The city water, uses municipal trucks to pick up, uh, this bulky waste.
I was gonna say, if you really want to get rid of something in, in the month of December, I bet you find a way to get rid of it in the month of December.
A lot of it's behind your house.
Well, it's also called, it's also called a dumpster, and we're probably, we, 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 we.
But, but, this, last year was their first time this year.
For the bulky waste?
Yeah.
You mean for the new ownership?
Right, and you guys have been working with Archie's. I have high hopes.
Every single week.
See what happens this year?
Well, I guess, I mean, my only two senses that it, it could do better this year if we strategically work with them in advance to make sure that it's better. That's what I've been trying to do.
You've been doing that.
So.
Well, they probably wouldn't have a problem if they went by road.
Right.
Picked everything up at each house, and they know they've already covered it, but there's more out there, pop, drop lot, it's staying.
Like, go by the road.
Right, and I like, I like the idea that you have, but I also understand the simple, the simple fact that our, our residents are accustomed to not, like, a lot of times people in Buckfield, well, I'm gonna justify buying and pick up, because damn it, I need to go to the dump, you know, so stuff like that. Our residents in Hartford aren't accustomed to that, which obviously they, they could do that, but, um.
I get that, but the same people that are saying that.
My family's attorney just started charging three dollars a piece for mattresses.
Right, I saw that.
Because that's what it costs the town when they take it to the M Y facility, because a mattress doesn't fit
Right.
into the hopper, they have to be broke up.
Just a thought that I had was, if there was a way to work very closely with Archie's through the bulky waste process, Tucker Road is checked off, Tucker Road is done, we somehow make it known Tucker Road is done, anything, you know, just, we could be very tight with them through that process hypothetically, and if anything turns up on Tucker Road, somebody needs to take care of it, but.
And that's, and then there lies the doubt, because, um, there's likely to be piles of stuff that end up, having been put out late, and there they sit, and when people have shut something in the second row, it's remarkable how they don't want to take responsibility for it.
All right, and it can, it carried on so long last year that people just kept loading more stuff out there, and I, it was a mess, so.
Yeah, it was.
Either way, I think, I think we need to continue to discuss this, and I don't think we need to make a decision right now.
So, the other thing, uh, does it say on here when, it starts on Monday?
Is this a town on Harvard document or issued by Arch, Archie's already?
It's ours. June nineteenth.
Yeah, that's what, that's when material must replace at curbside, that's one of my other concerns, is if you're placing it on June nineteenth, they'll get there till Friday.
Right.
And it pours all week. Your ton just went out.
Well, how is there any difference in the bin sitting here and it raining well and stuff like that?
Because the bin's gonna get.
All the way?
Yeah, it's gonna get filled quicker.
Well, and, and if the bin gets raining on, that still increases your tonnage typically.
Right, I mean.
Right, but, I guess so, yeah.
We like to talk trash, it's not, but.
I'm just thinking. It's gonna go a lot faster here than it is, than driving around, is what I'm saying. Less chance of a week-long process, instead of, it could be two days.
Right. I guess I would be curious historically, on a really good year, how long it took them to actually get to the town, but I don't, I don't know that.
Well, they used to go around with the freaking.
Used to do it in a week in Archie's.
Oh, my God, we did in a couple of days.
Yeah.
Was it? Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah, you used to take them.
Lost more than what they're picking up now.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because we, we do it.
I mean, I wouldn't mind reaching out to Miranda to see if they do that in other towns, and if they have strategically discussed as a team and their intentions on how they plan to do it this year.
Yeah.
I can do that, we're not.
I know, I think I know they do that lumped in.
I'll find a moment.
Oh, man.
I still have her back on that. The woman I talked to at AFCO. Not at AFCO, but the woman I talked to, um, uh, what was his name, Peggy, what was that guy I talked to at AFCO, what company?
All the way.
I don't remember. He was supposed to email me, I gave him my card, he hasn't emailed me about trash, but I never saw it, but, all right, anyways.
I read that, and I'm like, I thought you, nevermind.
Okay, appointments and resignations. We have one resignation from Dave Terrio. Please accept my resignation from the planning board. Dave Terrio.
It was the only verbal, he didn't give us a written one, so.
Are we gonna sign this thing?
Although, I'll, uh, make a motion to accept the resignation of Dave Terrio from the planning board with regret.
Second that motion.
One favor?
And then, um, we have, uh, someone that wants to fill that position. I'll make a motion to appoint Dave Bowen to the planning board.
Yes.
I second that motion.
One favor?
I suppose we did that last week.
No, we didn't, we didn't have the, we didn't have the formal resignation.
Oh.
Training, training.
Uh, hold on, not training.
We didn't go over the Austin.
Yeah.
We had three add-ons to the agenda.
What was?
Did we do the other two? I can't remember.
Yeah, we did. That would be one of them, the other one's in executive session, so.
Oh, okay, all right, nobody to talk about this? So, we, we're, Austin Electronics came in and did some volunteer services to help us get the cameras and audio back up and running, at which time we discussed with them putting, mounting a TV, adding a receptacle. So we have a quote here for that, and the amount of six sixty-five twenty-five.
And wireless H T M I.
And wireless H T M I. So mount the TV, mount the bracket, mount the TV.
So we can connect the computers to the TV without a one hard definition, something in input, I don't know.
Yeah, that.
We don't need any, it's wireless.
Right.
So basically a Bluetooth TV screen?
Kind of.
Basically, kind of, it's a, you know, it's an, it's a wireless way to connect to it.
Smart TV.
And you can take it anywhere in the room.
Smart TV.
So, my question is, where are we borrowing this money from?
Well, it would most likely be coming from the same budget that we bought the TV with, did we have any money with that? I don't know.
Yep, we had seventeen sixty-seven, we spent five sixty-two sixteen on the TV, that leaves twelve hundred five dollars ten cents.
Perfect.
So we either do this ourselves, or we pay to have it done, because I know.
I don't, we've been saying we're gonna do it, I don't have time to do it.
I don't either, so, I, I make a motion to award this to Austin Electronics.
And pay from.
And what?
And pay from what?
And pay from this C B account that we used to buy the TV.
Goodwill supper.
The goodwill supper.
Would you count it, please?
Goodwill supper.
I'll second.
One favor?
Seventeen hundred dollars there?
Yeah, you're done good. All right, I'll reach out to Neil Austin and.
Go for it.
No, thank you.
And you know the amazing part of what's all that money? The shoppers were free, and we never asked a cent from anybody, all we had was a donation shop.
Pretty amazing.
Yeah, well, we made more money that way than we would pay, if we were asking people to pay for the business, and we did it for twenty-six, seventeen.
I thought it was, oh, yeah, oh, three to twenty, that's right.
Okay, training, training.
Ta-da.
No training?
We do have something in December there for the G A.
December eighth?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was just looking for. I think it's December eighth. I don't have it on my calendar, you're supposed to send me the invite for that, Nick, what's, what's the matter with you?
I bet you were sending the invite for that.
No.
I keep forwarding the emails from the, the state about general assistance to you three, and Erin and Nick always comes back saying that, that type of email isn't accepted, I don't know if you're getting them or not.
I haven't seen anything for general one.
December ninth.
Is it December ninth?
Twelve, nine, general assistance training.
Twelve thirty.
Can you forward that to us?
I'm, I'm pretty sure that I've got it.
Okay, does it, both of you come back, it's not acceptable or?
It's like a, oh, it's like a newsletter?
No, it's an actual training, like, invite.
Oh, okay, it's an in, okay, maybe that's not, maybe I haven't been getting it then.
Yeah, I'm, I was gonna email her anyways, yeah.
Put it here on the Monday.
Did you send it?
No, I didn't send it. Okay, I'll remind you.
Would it be ideal if Neil did that on Monday too, there Wednesday, since you're here? Probably.
Um, yeah. Thank you.
See ya.
Thank you, bye.
Twelve thirty. Your lunch hour.
Yeah, what lunch hour? Don't get a lunch hour. I've got the docu, the paperwork for that training at home on my desk, so.
All right, thanks.
See ya.
See you later.
See ya.
I don't think anything is going on until Sunday, that supper.
What's that?
Not much is going on besides meetings until that supper on Sunday.
I don't think I'm gonna eat supper tonight, no.
Now we go into executive session.
I'll make a motion and do, do executive session.
Do we shut off the cameras?
Yeah.
Once you finish this.
Yeah.
Oh.
Need a second.
I second it.
One favor?
I could use a bathroom. During executive session.
Are there gonna be any decisions, should I just pause this? Because decisions have to be in, in public.
No decisions.
And you're not gonna do anything after this agenda items? I'll just mute it for now.
Okay.
Now what do we say?
You got more things on the agenda?
Yeah.
I don't think I have any.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, it's back on. Gender items for next meeting.
I have a whole list here. You want me to read down?
Yeah.
Salt shed use, McNeil farm. Rules of procedure.
Yeah.
Yeah?
No.
No?
Don't put that on there.
No?
All right.
No, if we put that on there, we have the same conversation we had tonight.
Yeah, I didn't want her to do that.
Yeah.
But you can put on there, update from MMA regarding comprehensive planning. Who was, who... Yeah, that's fine.
Comprehensive plan update.
Yeah. Or ad hoc planning. I don't know how we want to title it, but...
I have appointment to the withdrawal committee. 2:50 celebration. I'll invite Lorene. Ordnance list, site review ordinance. Realtor. Waste flyer. Waste contractor and comprehensive info. Comprehensive plan info update.
What?
What?
Nothing.
All good.
Next meeting is December 2nd. They have till November, December 1st to put the dumpsters, November 30th?
November 30th, right?
The 2nd is a Tuesday, okay.
Yeah.
The 30th is a Friday?
No, can't be. It's only 30 days. It must be Sunday.
Sunday.
I don't know.
What did we, what did we say? We said...
November 30th. They would put them. They'd be there from November 30th to May 1st.
See, when I looked at the schedule, I corresponded to Friday.
Can't be.
November 30th is Sunday.
Does the man want it on Facebook?
Maybe I, maybe I talk to her about the 28th and...
November 30th through May 1st. Like every year, so.
Right.
Close to that.
Yeah.
But December 2nd on a Tuesday, they should be there, right, on collection day?
Right.
I'm gonna be here Friday. We're getting our new scanner. I didn't want to say anything to Peggy because she was... Oh.
Need me to copy you?
So...
Ah, yeah.
I, the last time I texted her, I said, um... Just to reiterate from our last conversation regarding Garden Drive and West Cove Drive, we will of course need a trash dumpster as well as recycling dumpster for those roads from November 30th through May 1st. So...
So that means they should be there Friday unless they're working, well, they don't work Saturday.
Right. Friday, Saturday, Monday. Get three days to get them there.
He's already, he's already backpedal on, he said before September 1st.
Just saying.
They're gonna fall on different days of the week every year.
Hopefully, hopefully it works. If it doesn't, then we send another option. Okay.
I don't think we need executive session doing for the waste contract. I mean, all you have to, if you want to send a letter, all I can do is make a motion. We haven't...
Right.
Right.
Unless you want to discuss it privately again.
Nope. We will need it for that other one though. Second executive session, yeah.
Okay. Matt, where Ed's not on?
Yeah, I just got a text message, so...
Okay.
Leave you guys behind the junk though.
I'll go help.
Junk yards.
I have it.
You said Jerry was in charge of that.
Yeah, so we should have brought that on tonight. That's my bad. I hadn't known that was true. We added the next...
Jerry?
Jared.
Jared.
Oh, Jerry.
Jerry.
I heard Jerry too and I was like, who?
Jerry, yep, right. I forgot to mention it, Dwayne. But... He does have junk outside of the gate.
Um, I did something else too. I can't remember what it was. I, I'll think of it.
Think of it later. Email it in.
I'm good.
I'm great.
I'm starving.
Yeah.
I'll mention it to Jared. We'll, we'll clear it over.
Yeah, that, so we'll have him on the agenda for an update.
He's supposed to submit a, a list of what's coming and out.
He hasn't for quite a while. Hasn't for a long time.
Right.
I just hope he's not making another junkyard up by our townhouse road. At the top of the hill. You can see vehicles in the road, but he's got no trespassing signs down at the bottom.
After he showed up in that event, he said he was not running a junkyard back in here.
Look, he told me it should be continued with the women's guy.
Oh.
The land continues. Well, yeah, I don't think so. Maybe, but...
All right.
Anything else?
You want to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah. Adjourn. 9:14.
So there's a, a dinner there Sunday.
Yeah, I was gonna ask.